Thank you, LTV. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the East Hampton Town Board Work Session of Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. Carol, if you could please read the roll call.
Present. Present.
Present.
Present.
Present. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this morning, we opened with public portion. We ask you to please kindly keep your comments to three minutes. We have a very robust session today for topics. We start with bids with Jeannie Caroza, then Becky Hanson will take us through the 2026 tentative budget. Heath Liebman from our IT department is going to take us through a presentation on scams, how to spot and avoid them. We're going to have a discussion with Jake Turner about Chapter 102-14, Building Construction and Certificate of Occupancy. Then Kate is going to lead a discussion on short-term rentals here in the town of East Hampton. Ian's got a presentation on the Maidstone Park Playground. And then Eric Shance will be remoting in, and we're going to have a post-hearing discussion about affordable multiple residents. Then that's followed by liaison reports and resolutions. So first, we start with public portion. Carol, has anyone signed up? Okay. Gloria, welcome, Gloria.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Gloria Frazee, and I just came from the gym, but I did shower in between, so we're okay. We don't need to evacuate the building. I was on the treadmill and got started talking with the woman next to me, who actually happens to work at the gym. And I asked, "What's that construction over there?" And she said, "Oh, it's Cantwell Court. That's where they're finally putting in some affordable housing." And I said, "Oh, that's where it is. That's really cool." And she said, "Yeah, we need more of that. It's great that they're doing this." And she has just changed apartments again, always because getting kicked out of one house and then another and then another. And then I was talking with my trainer as I was sweating and trying to talk. And Melody actually just moved this past weekend with her husband from one apartment to another because the first one became unaffordable. It's being renovated, it's being sold, you know, all of this stuff always happens here. And then that made me think of a worker I know at, he works both at Nick and Tony's and also at Amber Waves. His building is being sold. He cannot find another place to live that is in any way affordable. He's just looking for a room, and it's crazy expensive. So this is someone who is local, has a couple of jobs, is also looking, okay, the winter season's going to be slower, which happens around here, so he can't afford what he would pay in summertime year-round. There are a lot of people coming in, summer times, short-term rentals, and it just makes it unaffordable for people. And this is just like today, people, unbidden, were talking to me about this. So it's a real need in the community to keep East Hampton livable for locals. We've got problems with traffic. People are driving all over the place. I mean, Carolyn at the gym also said, her friends who live in Montauk and work in Montauk, they don't know how much longer they can keep affording rent there. And just the thought of driving from where, Up Island, to here, and I know that the town is having issues also, how can you find people to work for the town in a lot of these positions that are going unfilled? It's too expensive, and it's not sustainable for our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Would anyone else like to address the board? Okay. Jody, is there anyone on the line?
Nope, there are no callers on the line.
All right, so we're going to move over to topics, then. So first up is Jeannie Caroza with bids. Welcome, Jeannie.
Good morning. Good morning. Thanks going on for today. The first is for town hall windows and facade restoration. Ronald Webb Builder is the apparent low bidder for the base bid total of $290,868. And that would, this includes the front windows and the east side, and then we'll just continue from that point on. Next is printing of sanitation permits and other forms. Consent Print is the apparent low bidder for that. And then we had another printing bid for miscellaneous forms, and Ridgewood Press and ELC Print are the apparent low bidders for those. And a couple of rejections. First is for Car Carrier for the Town Fleet Garage. The pricing came in very high. And next is the Abraham's Path Park Comfort Station and Storage Building, and that will be revised and we'll be doing another bid at a later date. And lastly, there'll be a notice for next week on October 16th for the Justice Court interior painting. And that's all for today.
Great. Any questions for Jeannie?
No, but just a discussion on the Abraham's Path Comfort Station, if you don't mind. We looked into that. The bids came in higher than anticipated. We're looking to redesign for cost savings. They're also working with engineering, and then also potentially adding in the new pickup ball courts into the discussion as far as construction during this potential next bid. There might be a cost savings on the economy of scale and the bidders, so we still want to try to get that done, potentially by summer next year also. So I just want to explain to everyone to that. That's why I did that. Thank you, Jeannie, for working with me on that.
No problem.
Jeannie, sorry, I do have just one question on the town hall windows facade, just to be clear. So is that going from the town, this building, all the way to the far east one?
Just the building right here. So where Becky's office is upstairs in mind, those front windows, the front shingling, and the east side of that building with the windows and the shingling. And then we have, there were several alternates on it, but the total came in with the alternates very high, so we're just doing the base bid. That includes just those sections, and then we're going to do it piecemeal after that.
So it's restoration of the existing windows and replacement of the shingles?
Exactly. So actually, those windows will be used, and they're going to, you know, the wooden frames and the sashes and all of that will be back to the historic work.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jeannie.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up is the Town Administrator Becky Hanson to talk about the 2026 tentative budget. Welcome, Becky.
Good morning. Becky Hanson, Town Administrator and Budget Officer, and I'm here to present the 2026 budget. I thought I would just briefly mention that the supervisor did something a little different this year as far as selecting the cover. I thought we should give a shout out. The supervisor sent out an email to all town employees, asking them to please submit a picture of their favorite location within the town to be considered for the cover. And we are happy to announce, I don't know if LTV, Andy Drake from our Land Management Department had a picture of Amsterdam Beach that was selected. Andy, congratulations. You don't win anything great, other than my eternal thanks that I did not have to try to dig up a picture for this year's cover.
He did get a photo credit.
He did get photo credit. So for all of eternity, he will be on the budget documents for 2026. So again, I'm here to present the 2026 tentative budget. I would first like to thank the supervisor, the Town Board, and the department heads for their time during this entire process. I'd also like to specifically thank staff from within the Finance Department, Najee Valera, our Deputy Budget Officer, Alex Papajon, our Senior Accountant, and G. Seth Pacheco, one of our accountant trainees, who worked, put in a lot of time and a lot of hours to actually have the document that's before you today. We began budget preparations back in June and performed internal work in the Finance Department in July and August. The supervisor, Town Board Liaisons, excuse me, Town Board Liaisons and Finance Staff conducted a total of 29 meetings with department heads that concluded in mid-August. From then until mid-September, additional meetings were held to refine and finalize the document that you have today. The 2026 tentative budget totals $109,910,500. In dollars, this is just over a $5.9 million increase from the current year and equates to a 5.76% increase. The tentative budget proposes to pierce the tax cap by levying a total amount of $70,090,762. And this is for the four townwide funds. This is an amount of $2.1 million over the tax cap. The tax cap was capped at 2% from the prior year, which is not a straight 2%, which is often, people misunderstand that, but it is a form, there is a formula and a calculation that we get from New York State that tells us how much the amount that we actually can levy. Our allowable amount from 2025 to '26 was only just over $2.2 million total. The town did receive a pension exclusion from the police and fire retirement because the proposed rate increase and the contribution to the police-fire retirement system was higher than the allowable amount under the law, so we did get a small pension exclusion. It was just under $100,000 relating to PFRS. 63% of the total budgeted expenditures are related to salaries and benefits. Most unions within the town are receiving a contractual 4% increase. If we do a comparison between the 2025 adopted budget to the 2026 tentative budget of full-time salaries, this alone is an 8.4% increase or just under $2.8 million. And as I just said, the tax cap alone, we were allowed only $2.2 million. Health insurance premiums, we've been budgeted with a 10% increase, even though we never know this actual amount at the time the budget is adopted. We received the rates from NYSIP sometime in December, and as we all know, the budget has to be adopted by state law by November 20th. We were fortunate that when we received the rates in December of 2024 for '25, they were much lower than we expected. So even though we budgeted a 10% increase, that is based on the actual rates that we received in December of '24. So when we actually look at the budget as a whole, it's a 6% budgeted expenditure increase within the budget document itself. This year, we actually are paying, the cost for a family plan is $3,367 a month, and a single plan is $1,479 a month. Retirement contributions are responsible for some of the larger spending increases in the tentative budget. For ERS, which is the Employees Retirement System, and PFRS, the Police Retirement System, we're budgeting increases of 23% and 14% respectively. This is based on rates that we have received from the Comptroller's Office a few weeks ago, and depending on the tier that you are within your retirement system, there are varying contribution rates. For some of the higher tiers, which in PFRS would be Tier 2, in ERS, Tier, I think we have one employee who's a Tier 2 and Tier 4, we are looking at some contribution rates of between 35% and 40% for some of those higher tiers for employees who have longer, who have more longevity. You may have noticed that even though it's a small amount of savings in the 2026 budget, there is the elimination of the MTA payroll tax. That was just over $134,000 within this year's budget, and that's because the state legislature eliminated the payment of it by local governments during their budget this year. Some of the other highlights within the budget, specifically for beach personnel, there's an increase in spending for part-time salaries of $270,000. There also are a number of new positions within departments, the Police Department, Marine Patrol, and buildings and grounds and parks for groundskeepers. And I think it's interesting to note that the addition of one employee, including salaries and benefits, can easily cost over $100,000 alone. The town has worked hard to minimize the tax implications to property owners, especially since local governments have very few non-property tax alternatives as far as revenues are concerned. For a home that has an assessed value of $4,000, which a market value would be $1.25 million, if you are living outside of a village, the tax impact proposed would be $84.16 increase from the current year. If you are within a village, the tax increase would be $27.44. When it comes to revenues, the town does continue to take a conservative approach, but does adjust or increase or decrease accordingly. We've realized in 2025, we have seen steady revenues within the Building Department, bank interest that we're collecting on all the bank accounts, so those are also reflected as some increases within the 2026 budget. We also do, we continue to monitor, I think it is important to note, of what is going on at the federal level. A number of the town's human services and housing programs do receive federal funding. In 2024, that funding alone in revenue was over $1.4 million. So again, we are closely watching that. Hopefully, that no funding is pulled or programs are cut back that where the town may have to step in and supplement some of that funding at some point. But again, it's just something that we continue to keep an eye on. Last week, New York State, the Office of the Comptroller, released its annual fiscal stress designations based on our 2024 fiscal year. I'm happy to announce again that the town did receive a no designation, which is a good thing, meaning that the town is not giving any indication of any fiscal or environmental stress. The state takes into a lot of factors when they are calculating that amount, such as your fund balances, which compare to your cash ratio, and also the amount of debt service formula compared to the revenues that you are actually taking in. The town this year also maintained its AAA rating for Moody's, and when Moody's announced the rating this year, that they took into account the town's conservative budgeting and sound fiscal management, which has led the town to maintain very stable reserves. So the documents, since we've put it out last week, internally, we've identified just a handful of salary adjustments that are needed. In the A Fund, there's an additional $12,000 that's needed. In the B Fund, we're looking at just over $5,000, but in the Highway Fund, there's actually a decrease of just over $5,000. So the gross total right now, adjustments needed, are just over $12,000 across just those three funds. So moving forward, what the schedule would be, you know, after today's discussion, if there are any changes, I always say, let me know by Friday of this week if there's anything that you need us to calculate, and I'll be back at the next work session. On October 16th, the Board will adopt two notices, one for the public hearing to pierce the tax cap, and a second one to notice for the budget hearing. Both hearings will take place on November 6th. The tax cap override, local law, does have to be adopted prior to the adoption of the budget under state law. That can be done at the same meeting as long as the resolutions or the tax cap is done before the budget. However, we would like to adopt the tax cap override at the work session meeting earlier in the week and then adopt the budget on the 20th. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Great. Thank you for that introduction. That's great. Board members have questions or comments they want to make about the 2026 tentative budget?
I'll start off. I mean, firstly, I commend you, Becky, on the job you do. It's, you know, it's effectively running the town on a budget that's not actually dissimilar to what the high school budget is, and we're covering a vast area of land with, you know, limited resources. When we hear from residents as to concerns they have with the operations, you know, the fix always involves people or money, and often one and the same. From your perspective, though, just what we're looking at for the next year, where do you see the biggest risks to what we're budgeting in terms of the unknowns right now? Is it in the health benefits? Is it in the insurance?
I mean, it's, a lot of it is the same stuff from year to year. I mean, again, the health insurance really isn't unknown until we get that bill from NYSIP in December. You know, usually, a 10% is a standard, but again, in December of '24, when the family plan increase was only 2%, and a single plan was less than a half percent increase, I mean, that was really huge for us. But having that extra within the budget allows us that if we have a project that's overrun and we do need additional funds to cover something, that we can, you know, move monies within the budget, because I always say, it is a fluid document, it's a guideline. We never, we really don't know what's going to hit us from one year to the next, that we're still able to use those monies without having to dip into a fund balance to cover maybe a project that went over or there wasn't enough funding for. Again, so the health insurance is always the biggest one. The budget is pretty lean. I mean, quite honestly, there are, it's basically funding what you have going on right now. Sure, there's additional funds within the beach budget for $60,000 for a new lifeguard stand. There's additional funding to do mailings on sustainable plantings for town residents. So again, unknown as far as the federal government is concerned with revenues. I mean, a million dollars that we don't have budgeted, you know, could come in at any time. I mean, a number of our human services programs do receive federal funding on the revenue side, so, you know, litigation is always an unknown. So there are a lot of things that are unknowns, but thankfully, the town has, again, as Moody's noted, a very stable reserve and is very liquid, which can help address any issues or concerns. I mean, I think COVID is a really great example, that the town actually was, you know, fortunate to be one of the local governments to actually realize surpluses during COVID. So the town, I feel, is really prepared for anything that might come its way.
Thank you. No, I mean, look, I share your concern with the health insurance, and one of my fears is that, you know, given the relatively low increase that we saw than expected last year, we're actually going to get hit with something higher this year. And if anywhere that I would want to kind of be prudent with our strategy would be in that realm, and maybe I would see a 12% potential increase versus the 10%, just to cover any potential issues we might face there.
Okay.
So I'll just keep working down, if you don't mind. Yeah, thank, Madam Supervisor, well done on your budget again this year, then, too. I think what you've done here is pretty much maintained our staffing levels, increased in our public safety, three police officers, two Marine Patrol, and building the grounds. We dedicate the town of East Hampton to public safety. It's one of the most important things we do, and that's very important, to make sure that those ranks are sustained, then, too. So I do appreciate that. I did mention this to the Montauk CAC last night, and they were very happy about that also, then, too. When we start getting down to it, you know, Tom, you're correct, there are a lot of unknowns that are out here right now. But one of the things that we do know is that the town has retirement, and the town has benefits as far as medical, sometimes better than anyone else can do in the private sector right now, and that's what makes town employment actually very attractive. But those numbers are going to go up. You saw it at 28.3%, 14% with, you know, from the police to town retirement, and also the 4%, which I think is a very, very well-respected contract that you negotiated also last year, Madam Supervisor, on there, too. There's a couple of things that are more unknown that make me a little bit nervous going forward, and one of them is sanitation, Tom, right? We've been talking about the cost of sanitation right now. As much as our revenue numbers might be up in sanitation when it comes to revenue coming in, it's also costing a lot more to go out. One of the reasons why more revenue is coming in with C and D, construction debris, because individuals don't want to take it as far north and pay the same amount of money, but it's costing more to get off of Long Island. We're going to continuously keep seeing that, then, too, in sanitation. So those are numbers we have to keep maintaining, because we're a sole-source recycler out here. Tom's doing a great job as far as the capital investments on there of aging infrastructure right now, but we need to do, we need to continue to monitor.
Right, and you actually have a budget modification on for today to offset some of those increased hauling costs for this year.
Correct, and we've been discussing this the last couple of years, and it's now going to start getting there. I do think that we're starting to see a little bit of the revenues, some of the fee schedule changes. Councilmember Rogers moved that forward when it came to a lot of the building permits, those revenues there, to try to match the services that we're trying to provide as far as individuals in the Building Department, qualified staff right now. We did it with paid parking in downtown Montauk, which is up.
We're over 20, 23%. Yeah, I think we've collected over $230,000 so far this year.
A lot of that turns back into community beautification projects. So we, I think we looked at that amply in early 2025 or even late '24. We might want to do it again here and there, but it helps when you try to manage your budget. I want to salute you and your team for your night-class investment strategies. I believe it's night-class.
Yeah.
We brought that in the last two years. You're starting to see those increased investments in double digits right now, too.
Having, you know, an effect on the more traditional banking institutions that we've been with, too, realizing that we are, the town has been putting a lot of number, money into night-class, which is a municipal pool investment that municipalities are allowed to use, which provides a daily yield instead of a monthly yield on your investments. So again, a lot of our traditional banking opportunities know when the town is moving money and are trying to be just as competitive as night-class, too. So the town is the one that's benefiting from that.
And then just a couple, a couple of last things on there is, the town is going to have to start looking into the Army Corps of Engineers Project Downtown Montauk, which is called a project partnership agreement on there. That's being negotiated through and worked through with other townships that have these projects. There is going to be long-term cost implications for that for replenishment of sand, which the town's going to have to either budget for or find revenue streams for that, then, too. It's not a 2026 thing, but in '27, '28, and going forward for potentially decades right now, we're going to have to monitor that, find ways, so that's something to put on everyone's radar going forward on there. But overall, I only have one requested potential change, if you don't mind. It's a small one. It goes back to the license plate readers and to the budget for PD. I think we want to look at about another $10,000 there. I'll get some of the quote numbers from the chief of police, and that's just to cover some of the annual contract costs for those systems and programming, then, too. We did that well, but that wasn't put in there. That was a late request that I have also for you. But again, that, the revenue stream on the parking, paid parking, parking enforcement will easily offset that in the end, but I think we need to monitor and budget that into here also. I, again, it is a lean budget. It's a lean budget that is balanced and focused a lot on keeping the town safe, the employees paid well, and then also keeping it beautified, then, too. All things I think that we value. I think you're very humble, and you might get into it a little bit later, I'm so sorry for saying this, Madam Supervisor, the offsets to social services that were very high, I think you maintained that budget very well, Kathy, to be honest. What you're not noticing also there is Project Most, it's another $75,000, Project Most for daycare in Montauk. Tom, you fought hard for that, you know, excuse me, fought is the wrong word, you advocated for that, and it was easy avocation, because we all believe, I think, early childhood intervention in daycare is extremely important for the workers of East Hampton. I had all my kids there back in the day. I don't know if I could be here without it. But that is very important to try and maintain with the turbulence that we have in Washington right now, then, too. So all that moving forward, I commend you for what you did this time, Kathy.
Thank you, David.
Kate?
Yes, I'd like to point out a couple of things in the budget when we're talking about piercing the cap, because we don't do that lightly. And it is a very restrictive cap that, I mean, what was that, 2% put in, how many years ago?
14, yeah.
Yeah, 14 years ago, a cap was presented to us that is still the same exact number today, which doesn't reflect any cost of living increases or the instability that we're seeing because of tariffs and rising costs across the board. So I just want to also note, and thank you, and thank you, Kathy, for this budget, which emphasizes salaries and for town employees, as 63% is devoted to that, and the amount of regrades and promotions. And I think when we talk about employment in municipalities and what we spend on insurance, et cetera, I think that this is a stability that folks will be looking for in the future as even New York market insurance premiums go up higher and higher, where someone working for the town benefits from stability in health insurance that you can't find in the private sector today with the instability in all these markets. So spending our money on things like this, I think, is a good use of taxpayer funding. And also, as you state in your budget, the staff keeps the roads clear, responds to emergencies, maintains our beaches, supports family and youth. And I don't think there's a number you can put on providing those services to our town. I also see that the budget funds an expansion of school resource officer program, which I also think is another outreach for the town, taxpayers to fund those officers, train police officers in our schools that teach Dare curriculum to fifth and sixth graders, support classroom learning, presentations in health, and driver education, and we're closely with school staff on behavioral, disciplinary, and safety matters. They build strong relationships between young people and the police officers to serve our community. Again, I can't think of a better way for the town to actually outreach to another entity and be able to offer expanded services in these areas, so it doesn't go on your school taxes, although it does go on your town taxes. The community organizations that we support are vital in our community for what they offer to, and services to our community. So they also are another way to have a large group of people help people in our communities, and by the grants that we give them, we're able to bring that money back to the community as well. So overall, the budget is really the return of services for the taxes that folks are paying, and I think that's wonderful. The $590,000 to the YMCA Rec Center, that serves residents of all ages, is vital to keep those programs going. It's another way that taxpayers can see their money returned more than just coming to the town hall or going to our departments. And $750,000 to LTV to maintain public access, which is one of the most important pillars that we have. which is one of the most important pillars that we have here for public engagement with the town government and school governments. So I think the, one of my happiest things to see is the $30,000 to help educate residents on sustainable landscaping practices because in the end, these practices, if put into place, have an effect on the degradation that's happening on our water quality and our natural resources. So in a way, we, if you are, if you, if you look for practices that don't cause the problems, you're doing a better job than just trying to remediate the problems that happen. So I think that's also a very good use of town taxes. And then I think there are ways that we can continue to conserve and reduce some of our costs by sustainable measurements. And one metric that I'll pull out is the fact that the town-led, first East Hampton Town Lead compost program is up in three years to pulling out 13,400 pounds of food waste from our waste stream. Anything that goes out in our waste stream has a, an effect, a budgetary effect, it costs us money. So we can still look for ways by promoting townwide sustainability across the town to help reduce the costs as well. So while we're budgeting and increasing budgeting, I think it's worthwhile to also look for ways that we can conserve. And that's it.
Right, thank you, Kate. Ian?
Yeah, Becky, I don't have any questions. I would just like to reiterate previous comments and thank you that, you know, it's a ton of work that goes into this, I know, and not just you, but your, your whole team. I'm supportive of the budget. I think Dave's suggestion for license plate readers, I'm a big fan of, of that technology as, as we look to do more efficient enforcement and just, you know, our parking lots fill up. So those are important tools. I think it's been a really good program that, that should be expanded upon. So I'm supportive of that and otherwise just, yeah, thank you again for, for all of your hard work.
Becky, just one more thing, if we could talk, just enlighten folks about the difference between the tenant, the budget and capital projects which we bond for and the importance of that Moody rating.
Sure. So the town presents two spending plans for each fiscal year. One is the operating budget, which you adopt by November 20th and then as we get to the end of this year, my office, we send out requests to department heads to adopt a capital plan, which municipalities are required to have a multi-year capital plan adopted. And again, that's another guideline for equipment acquisitions, infrastructure upgrades, annual programs like road paving, sidewalk maintenance, police vehicle purchases. And the town board, we discussed that earlier, early in, in the new fiscal year and it's adopted usually by early spring. A majority of that planned debt is issued for it because the projects are much more expensive. And however, the last couple of years, the town, you know, being fortunate to have healthy fund balances in your major funds for smaller projects has accessed fund balance so it's not to incur long-term debt on one-time smaller purchases or acquisitions or projects. So that will, that process, once this has been adopted, then right on the heels of adopting the operating budget is when the capital plan process begins.
And our rating provides us with an ability for low interest.
Yes, absolutely. Having a AAA rating, you know, does save taxpayers probably hundreds of thousands in the long run on interest payments to repay debt. The town does have an annual debt sale in August where we issue new debt and also retire existing or roll current debt. So we're continually trying to maximize, you know, any opportunity that's going to benefit the taxpayer.
Thank you.
Just two additions, I'm sorry.
David, you had your chance.
I know, I know, but I want to get in.
Councilmember Leece, you had your chance.
42% increase in aquaculture sales, come on.
Yes, I know, Barley's doing good, Barley's doing good.
See if scalps would be different, but aquaculture sales are up 42% because every dime really counts. I think beating down to some of the numbers about the garbage removals, you see that in the buildings and grounds, just from the beach garbage removals is 65 tons a year, 150,000. The target is 130,000 pounds and then garbage removal throughout the township through our cans and such is nearly 475 tons is what's projected.
And you bring up a really interesting point. Department heads hate this, but for the public's benefit and if anyone looks through the budget, the preface to any department is what we call key performance indicators, which are stats for each individual department, actuals for the last two years, projected for the current year end, and then also targeted for 2026. And this is a way for the town to be really transparent to its residents and its taxpayers about what some of these departments are really doing. Actually, this year, our department heads were overwhelmingly cooperative in providing all of the updated information, some data that just was incomplete for, for certain years, but I really kudos to them to be able to provide us all of that information. But again, it's, it's, it's important for the public and again, for the town to be transparent about what some of these departments are actually doing.
It's a very data-driven budget then too, and that's why, that's why we have such great department heads and staff to give us information so we can crunch the numbers to make sure we're validating what we're asking for the tax dollars to be paid for. But also in that, what you see is you actually see a decrease in some of the road and garbage collection potentially for next year because we're using more of the carry-in, carry-out philosophy as some of our, some of our beaches on there then too. But those all encapsulating, we saw just recently neighboring municipalities, how we're moving trash waste receptacles can, it's something that the residents want then too. This budget reflects what the values of the residents want as the supervisor put in the preamble.
Just have one quick question, just I forgot to ask, which is the, one of the larger increases we saw in a percentage and dollar amount was the Juvenile Aid Bureau, which is going from about 200,000 to 400,000. Could you just talk to what's driving that increase?
Sure, that is actually, as Councilmember Rogers mentioned, the SRO program or the School Resource Officer. So the police and Juvenile Aid Bureau is probably more antiquated name for the program now. It used to be called JAB, you know, when Dare was the initial Dare type program. We should probably actually possibly rename that department, but anyway. So that is where two police officers are now being funded as the school resource officers in the 2026 budget. For a number of years, the town has funded their singular SRO through the A Fund. So now that we have two SROs, one dedicated solely to the high school and a secondary that is a floater between the other districts, since the entire town benefits from those SROs, both of those SROs being in the school, we reallocated the secondary SRO from the B Fund into the A Fund.
Right, so that program, Tom, gets run by, you know, overseeing is Lieutenant Alversa and now Sergeant Nick Lloyd has also had the training, so he's going to be pushing in more to the schools. We've got Police Officer Michael Rodriguez, as Becky mentioned, he's in the high school. Police Officer Devin Toya is in the feeder districts and we just did a resolution last Thursday night authorizing two more police officers to go for the week-long training at the end of October and that's Police Officer Mike Gomez and Police Officer Danny Toya, I'm sorry, Danny Munoz. So we are going to have more officers that are trained in that and can help support because I think that's what our community is, you know, interested in supports and I think it, they work well with our school districts and I think it gives families and parents peace of mind. So as David said, you know, the, I've always said that the, the budget is a reflection of what the community values and what our priorities are and this budget, you know, supports and recognizes the contributions of town staff with promotions, regrade, regrades, merit raises, training opportunities and the addition of seven new positions, which Becky spelled out. We also, this budget supports our families through our support of Project Most and Eleanor Whitmore, which are quality childcare and after-school care. As Kate mentioned, we support the YMCA, which is the kind of the umbrella that a lot of our organizations operate under, like Hampton Lifeguard Association, Ocean Rescue, to help waterproof our kids and, you know, and every child in the community up to the age of 18 gets a free membership to the Y. It also supports grants to mental health providers and like Family Service League and Phoenix House. But then we've got the organizations that roll up their sleeves and open their hearts to those who need a little help, like our three local food pantries, Montauk Springs and East Hampton. We support the Meals on Wheels program, the Montauk Community Nutrition Program, and then the retreat and I Try, just to name a few. And then we have grants and some are smaller in nature that, for those folks in our community that need a creative outlet, like Neapolitan Cowgirls, our fabulous variety show, East Den Special Players, and then the, the agreement that we have with LTV. So I think overall that this is a fiscally responsible and a socially responsible budget that we've, you know, laid out here and Becky will come back to the work session when we're back in Montauk on the 14th. You know, typically when we start talking about the budget, things come up, as Becky mentioned, there's, you know, a handful of changes that needs to be made, salaries that needed to be adjusted. I mean, it is a 302-page document and, you know, there's a lot of numbers and so things will get solidified and so if you have anything that you want to bring forward or changes you want to make, as Becky said, let's get it to her by Friday.
One, just one last question, sorry I should have said earlier, but just, this isn't so much about the '26 budget, this is about the '27 budget. One of the biggest drops in the cost we're seeing for this year is the bond anticipation notes, going from, past few years have been at 2.2 million, et cetera, this year we've dropping it down to 300,000. Are we expecting to see a big increase in bond anticipation notes in '27 and how could that impact the budget?
That is going to depend on your 2026 capital plan. So with this year's debt sale, we rolled a lot of the bands, which, you know, public's benefit, short-term borrowing within five years to be paid off. We rolled a lot of that short-term debt into the longer-term debt. So we issue short-term debt usually on larger projects. To get started, we may not have that final number yet till we, you know, start, you know, initiate, issue the initial debt. We go out to bid to make sure we don't need any additional funds or maybe we'll, you know, we issued a debt and we have a little bit of cushion in case changer orders are needed. And then once we kind of get towards the finish line on some of these larger projects, we close out the short-term debt and turn it into long-term debt. So talking to '27, that will depend on, on what you adopt for your 2026 plan as far as issuing new debt.
Okay.
Could you just also talk, Becky, because we went, we do our debt sale annually in August and how much interest there was last time around?
A lot. You know, our bond counsel and our financial advisors love when our debt sale time comes around because we have, we generate probably more interest than a lot of their clients. They think it's funny that people want to say that they own a part of East Hampton, you know, as part of the debt that, that we're borrowing. So our financial advisors are very happy every August when our debt sale comes around and that we are able to routinely get some of the lowest interest rates that are current, you know, given whatever the financial condition is at the time we're issuing the debt.
Because we're so competitive.
Because we're extremely competitive and having the, the Moody's rating and also the highest short-term rating outlook also. It's a mid-one, I believe is what they call it. So the town is fortunate to have that as well.
Beautiful. All right. Okay, it's a wrap. Great, thanks.
Thank you, Becky, appreciate it. And to your staff who's, we had a little celebration, right? When this finally got published and handed off to the clerk. And I will say, handing it off to the clerk, Carol, was very bittersweet because this was the last budget that Carol will be receiving as town clerk and you're going to be on a retirement tour, I'm sure, in the next few months and we're really grateful for you and all that you do for us. Critical department in our town. Okay, so now we have Heath is up here to talk about scams, how to spot and avoid them. This is something that came about, I'm sure you're going to address. Do you need someone to run the PowerPoint or are you good sitting at the desk there and, and doing it?
I could probably do both.
Okay. Thanks, Heath.
As well, Heath is setting us up. For those of you who don't know Heath, he's head of our IT department for the town and I'm going to say he's done a phenomenal job this year, rolling out Open Gov for the town and kind of introducing and implementing our cybersecurity programs across town processes. Thank you, Heath, for what you do.
And I would definitely second that and the impact that it's had on online permitting, online applications for our residents has been significant and also the vast amount of work that goes into cybersecurity, as you said, Tom, is, it's underrated for the impact that it has in keeping all of us safe.
Awesome.
Full screen, thank you. It looks nice.
Copy, one sec.
There's a remote, is?
It's just the question, should I stand here or?
Can you grab, is the remote there that you could change? Not that, no, that's a, it's a small remote that you can change. That's it. So you just need to point.
Plug in and we're good.
Should be. It was working the other day. We just had a.
You want me to sit down? Well, it looks like something might have been unplugged. So I'll just work from there. Good afternoon, everyone.
Hi, Heath.
Good morning. Still, almost afternoon. My name's Heath Liebman and yes, I'd like to talk a little bit about scams, online scams obviously, and how we can help prevent them from happening to us, our family members and generally anyone who, which is everyone, is susceptible. We like to know that with scams, we're going to worry about why people try to do this. Well, the, the bottom line is always fundamentally money. We know that there are multiple types of scams. Today, they're more creative than they were in the past. I know some of us might remember the old school scams, we used to actually get in the mail. Some of us would get what was known as a chain letter, that if you didn't send it off to 20 other people, something terrible was going to happen to you or your family. And people really did respond to those type of scam letters as well. Of course, they evolved further and further along. We saw scams back when everyone was joining online for the first time with AOL and people would get the scams of some Nigerian princes offering to include us in the, in the scam that they were going to have where they're leaving their nation and wanted you to help with a bank transfer for millions of dollars, which they'll cut you in on. So scams have been around for quite some time. We, we know the techniques keep evolving to become more and more sophisticated to get into our psyche. I know that some people who I have known personally have fallen for some of these fraudulent scams just because of the excitement that comes with it. Good friend of mine, their, good friend of mine's mother actually received a phone call and it was a typical phone call where she believed it was her grandchild calling from jail in Mexico and she needed to wire a few thousand dollars to get her out and not to tell mom and dad. Unfortunately, people do find this type of tactic very, very easily believable and I try to say, well, don't. We, we should always question everything, you know, especially if you think you're speaking to your grandchild. Simple question, what's your birthday? Those grandparents know the grandchild's birthday probably faster than they know their own child. And a kid will normally be able to say their birthday where a scammer might not. Just pause. Don't take everything as, I immediately have to answer this, I immediately have to answer this. Worst place tends to be is also on the mobile devices. So when we know we're a victim of a scam, it, now I, I fall to a point where I'll deal with a lot of phone calls and I know the scammer is phishing. We know that phishing is a common term with emails, fake websites and of course, the phone calls, which we're getting, which we know, making sure I'm in the right place. I gotta move this over. Sorry about that.
No worries.
Yeah, we know that our scammers are looking to profit from any information they can glean from us, they can extract from our conversations. So always be a little bit on guard. You know, I know that a lot of people are often told, don't just simply answer a phone and agree to everything that are being asked of you. Don't say yes right away. Don't say yes right away. Scammers will deliberately try to target people who are, who are considered vulnerable, uh, people who are listening for an, an emergency situation. That causes a heightened sense of alertness in some people like myself, who say, all right, you're, you're coming at me a little hot, coming at me a little quick, so I want to slow this conversation down and get a clear understanding of what is being asked for. So that way, I can help discern if it is really a scam or a legitimate call. Online scams, as I started to mention, like phishing. Phishing is an example of where your scammer is looking for you to give them your credentials, your ID, your date of birth, your social security number. Items that they are phishing for is often your ID and your money. Sometimes it's or, but usually it's both. Fake websites are often the tools that our scammers will use to deploy their, their malicious software. Oftentimes, their website will look like a legitimate site, but will not be. Which is why, when you get a suspect email, don't click on any links or call any numbers within those emails. It's better to open up a brand-new web browser, take a look at the legitimate source for their, for their phone numbers and perhaps their emails. So if you were to receive an email from the town of East Hampton, if you weren't expecting anything, open up a fresh window, open up a fresh browser, browse to the town's website, and check for contact information there. Check the emails, if any are posted. Always call and verify with the department you think you are getting an email from that you believe might be fraudulent. Because that department will absolutely know whether or not you have been contacted. So we want everyone to just take a pause, examine what you're presented with, and determine, hmm, I'm not saying I don't trust you, so I'm going to verify on my own end, just to make sure we're both on the same page. Now, of course, malware tends to be something you might have clicked on in an email you received, or on a website that you went to inadvertently. Uh, websites such as clicking on an advertisement in any web browser that brought you to a site which is, again, phishing for your information, looking to get your personal information, and then plant software in your computer to use at a later time. This also happens on your phones as well, which, again, is why I like to remind people, be very cautious on your phone. It shouldn't be the go-to response for all emails. You can't always check the legitimacy of an email origin from your mobile device as easily as you can from your desktop computer. Uh, phishing, fake websites, malware, we have our lions and tigers and bears, oh my. All right, so a definition of phishing, yes. Phishing is a, a method which our online scammers are trying to glean information, to get information on your personal information or your financial information. And there are multiple types of phishing. Spear phishing is more targeted. Whaling is when they believe they've got somebody who is now giving them all the keys to the kingdom, all the information they could ever ask for. And they're going to profit quite... Often, they can profit quite easily, and it's very difficult to reclaim that loss. Clone phishing, again, is faking up the websites which will go to. And of course, we always wish to slow down to help avoid being phished. Fake websites I mentioned, fake websites are often seen with suspicious URLs. The website's name doesn't necessarily reflect the location you're going to. So if you're going to your banking site, Citibank, and it's not Citibank in the link, don't go there. Never go by a link to a website. Open a new browser and go that way directly. Do your own searches directly. Check for that HTTPS. There's a little lock at the top of the URL browser in the name of where you're navigating to. And if that lock's not there, don't trust that website. Especially with financial information or personal information. And I keep going the wrong direction. Phone scams. Phone scams are becoming more and more apparent. People are getting a lot of phone calls, and you'll get caller ID spoofing. So it'll say that it's coming from your bank. The call is not coming from your bank. It's coming from some scammer looking to, again, gather your information and use it at a later time. Uh, we know we can deal with robo-calls, where a lot of times, we have systems that could find them and, and block them. However, the problem with that is, robo-calls will get updated with new phone numbers, and they'll keep, keep trying to get you to give them your information. Obviously, another problem is with posing as a government official. We often find people are told that the IRS is coming for them. I know that if you check with the IRS and any federal government website, they will notify you. They do not place phone calls. They send an official letter, and they will notify you that way. You can also, when you get a phone call like that, come on, hold. Then look up the IRS directly and see if you are actually getting contacted from them, which most likely you're not. This is another example of why a phishing attempt will try to get your bank account information to say to wire mon- funds in or out. And if they do so, they have now access to your banking accounts. And again, that is what we wish to avoid. So again, slow down, take a pause. People get those scams, but I also included in the IRS scam, the occasional, uh, this is asking for gift cards. Anytime you're asked to go off online and go buy gift cards, and then come back and pass those gift card numbers to someone else, that is a scam. That is unfortunate that a lot of people get taken in because of the urgency at which the email comes in, stating that I'm your boss, and I need you to do me this favor to go out, purchase gift cards, and we'll reimburse you after you've returned. A lottery scam is another one, where people will get emails about winning a lottery. I often have to remind people, did you sign up to a lottery? Because generally, you won't be notified of winning something you never entered. But even if that's the case, I believe in instances where there will be some type of sweepstakes, notification usually comes in through the mail. Lottery scams. Investment scams. A lot of us are very familiar with investment scams. We tend to be a little more cautious. Unfortunately, everyone is still susceptible, especially when we get instances of being told there are monstrous returns for this minor investment. The lure of possibly becoming extremely wealthy from one of these windfalls is often what gets people to jump, especially when you are vulnerable. Vulnerable can be, you're having a bad month, you're a little behind on bills. Anytime you get an opportunity to get a catch-up, this tends to be the victims that are often targeted. It's not always. Even the extremely wealthy have fallen for multiple investment scams. And of course, we always want to try to protect ourselves the best we can, and that is to first identify what type of scam you might be encountering. I've included an example of a Ponzi scheme. Ponzi schemes, some of us may have been involved in in some way or another. Trying to remember, back in my college days, we encounter Ponzi schemes and pyramid schemes. These are where a group of people will pool money in, and the person on the top gets paid out. The people they bring in will be next, and the people they bring in will be next. Ultimately, all of these scams collapse. And there's always people who don't get paid out, ever. Pyramid schemes, just another example of the Ponzi scheme. Again, there's somebody at the top who is profiting first and walks away. The people at the bottom is when it collapses and always lose. Oh, yes, identity theft. Most of us may have encountered, if not encountered personally, but know people who have been victims of identity theft. Easiest case, once a scammer has your information, your name, your date of birth, social security number, the first course of action will often be, they will try to open up credit cards and file for unemployment in your name. These unfortunately tend to be just the first steps of a larger example of where they're going to start taking out credit. And even worse, attempting to steal your identity to transfer your property over to someone else. So it is very important to always maintain your privacy and always be sure of who you're sharing your information with. Credit card fraud. Using fraudulent information, pulling up a new credit card, pulling out lines of credit, making purchases. Social security fraud, filing for unemployment, or even filing for social security. Again, the primary information is what we are trying to always safeguard. And I will definitely state, I believe the IRS has, and social security, has increased their level online to using, I believe, the Real ID, the ID Me method, of which they are using a verification system to check you for who you really are before they work on transactions. So if you are in a situation where you're being scammed, note that the IRS will often never contact you by your mobile device or an email. And if you are prompted to go to a location where you're not being verified by multi-factor authentication, such as the ID Me, that's, that's most likely a fraudulent site. Okay, in conclusion, I want to, again, bring up the constant vigilance. Be aware of what you are being hit by. There are tons of scams out there, and we often fall victim when we rush. Take a beat, slow down, be accurate with who you believe you're communicating with. And it is okay to say, I, I'm not comfortable with this call. Hang up and find the actual resource. I know that phone books seem to be a thing of the past. Open up your phone book, find the telephone numbers of these organizations, call them directly. If you aren't calling them directly, which, by the way, information still works, 411, uh, call them directly. You will speak with a human being at some point and speak with them inquiring about this. So you are alerting them if you have been scammed, or concluding whether or not you were having a legitimate conversation with someone authorized for that organization. Always be skeptical. It's okay. It is definitely better to be safe than to make an oops and say, oh, how do I fix this now? Because then it becomes a different process of recovering from that oops. All right.
Heath, can you just, by part, let's just talk about what was the, one of the impetuses for, for having you present today was the, um, this, I guess, what would you call it? The scam that was going out where the planning board or, or the zoning board was sending out invoices to folks?
Right, well, I was first alerted by the planning director. She notified me that someone from the public had contacted her about a scam they received, saying they were from the town of East Hampton. Our online presence does put a lot of information out there. So scammers will take whatever they can from our online presence and gather that information in their first portion of building their, their plan on how to attack who they wish to attack. A lot of it can be gleaned from the information of who's going to be at what meetings. In, in regards to the planning department, they post them. They want to keep the public informed about what's going on. And by doing so, you put out a certain amount of information, which allows your scammers to start a target, building their scope of who they're planning on using to attack with. And being that planning happens to have a large public presence, they're able to get, well, let's take some of the people we know from the planning department and try to present an email that's fake. Now, these emails are often easily identified when you open up an email, and you will see the email address. It may have their name, but if you highlight over the email address, it will show you the actual name of where the email came from. And it absolutely did not come from the town of East Hampton, which will match our domain for our website, which any email officially from the town of East Hampton will be with the at E-H-A-M-P-T-O-N-N-Y.gov. Dot gov email addresses are for governments. All government municipalities have the ability to register for a dot gov email or a dot gov domain, and then have a legitimate controlled domain that only is available to the government. So that would be your first indication. Then the second part was they had grabbed a screenshot of our, our town seal. I believe they put that in their invoice. The invoice, it looked incredibly unprofessional. And I'm a firm believer, if it doesn't look clean, it probably isn't. And what I mean by that is, the, the invoice looked like it was a scanned invoice with some artifacts, which is just like the black lines you'll see on a piece of paper that is photocopied one too many times. And it had a watermark of our town seal. But really, a lot of other elements were just missing in a normal invoice. And of course, with our new, with our new system for OpenGov, the payment process is done entirely through your OpenGov portal. So if you have any bill that you're worried about paying, log into your portal and check your records that you have opened, and that's where the bills will be paid. It will not come from anyone internally to send an invoice to anyone in the public. The only, uh, potential invoice, I'd say, is maybe your tax bill. And even that, you can go to our town site... And even that, you can go to our town site and you can access your town tax directly there. So again, a lot of things were just off about this scammer, but it was something that somebody was following down the rabbit hole. And I hope they stopped before they went too far. Because unfortunately, it's for us, we want to stay on top of it anytime something like this does occur. That way, everyone is aware and to stay a little more vigilant in protecting your personal information. Call the town next time you get an invoice. You didn't request it, call the town. We are more than happy to address any questions from anyone at any time.
And we don't typically email invoices. We mail tax bills.
That is correct. That is definitely not something we're emailing yet.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you.
Look, it's a very pro-pro kind of topic because it's out there and people are being scammed on a daily basis. I just wanted to highlight some other resources for people. There is the Internet Crime Complaint Center. It's IC3.gov. For any online fraud or scams, you can use that. Also, feel free to contact the town PD department, 631-537-7575 for non-emergency events as well. And then the other thing you can do is you can actually create your own kind of preventative measures. There's a website, identitytheft.gov, to create a recovery plan, you know, should you ever come across any of this crime in itself. But I think as Heath says, just slow down, be vigilant. Anything coming from the town, you know, verify it with the town website or make that telephone call. But thank you very much for the presentation today.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Jim, if you have a question for Heath, you can maybe follow him outside and he can answer it for you. Okay? Thanks. All right. So next up, we have a discussion about Chapter 102-14, Building Construction Certificate of Occupancy. Jake, I know you were going to address this for us, please.
Good afternoon. I hope everyone's doing well, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. What we are currently looking at is our Chapter 102-14, Updated Certificates of Occupancies. We've had some time now for this to be implemented by the town, and we're looking at the process for which it has been implemented and any better practices or changes that might be needed to ensure that this goes smoothly. And I think the most important thing to remember here is the purpose of the updated CO. It's all about protection. It protects occupants of a property specifically so we ensure that everything is built up to code. Second, it protects buyers. So whenever somebody purchases property, they're insured that everything on that property has the applicable certificate of occupancy, and they don't have to deal with it later. And also, it protects the town's taxpayers. This ensures that everybody is paying their fair share. So that's the purpose behind this law, and we're working really well with getting this implemented and ensuring that everybody's safe. Now, as we look at it, we are currently looking at three different ways that we might need to amend the code to make it smoother. Specifically, we're looking at three things. One, the process for which an updated CO is applied for and ultimately granted. And we're trying to figure out ways that make it easier for property owners to obtain and apply for such. Second, we're looking at the penalty section to see if that is in proper alignment with what is going on. And finally, we're looking at whether or not there are any further exemptions which should be codified. I intend to come back before this board next week, maybe even after that, too, to keep this board updated as to what we are finding to ensure that all property owners get what they deserve. But I must let the board know that one of the major things that has happened is this board has done an excellent job at staffing the building department. What we have done recently in the hiring of our new head of the department, Richard Nermoy, is you have imported decades of experience, decades of code compliance, decades of process to ensure that we can have a smooth operating building department. In addition, there have been a number of other staff hires within the building department, which will also help alleviate any and all stress. So that's where I am right now. I can take any questions from the board, any direction from the board, and it's my intention to be back before you in the coming weeks.
So Jake, I'll just start off by saying I look forward to recommendations to how to make any process smoother while still maintaining safety.
And that is the process for which we are looking at this. We are looking at all available options, and we enjoy this.
I'm sure you do. Thank you.
Anytime we can make something better, it's always a positive step forward.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jake. Yeah, no, I would say, I mean, look, I'll be candid, but I've heard a lot of public feedback about concerns regarding this issue from the building industry, from the legal industry as well, as to kind of complications that have arisen. So I do know it's something we need to look at. I look forward to those recommendations. I know we've had chats offline about this as well, and I think it's important for the public to know that we are looking to improve that process where we can.
And on that note, Councilman, I'm available. Anytime anybody in the community has something to say as to how the process could be made better, as this board has always been, always seeking input, I'll take the input directly so we can work. Anybody has experience in this, willing to listen, to work with.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
I just want to say also, you know, I've heard also things, comments about this law, but very rarely is it people saying they think it's a bad idea. I think most attorneys, most people involved in real estate, agree that their buyers shouldn't know that what they're buying is legal, meaning as an updated CO. So I just think, like most things, the first time you change it, it's not always perfect. And so I think there need to be tweaks. One thing that I've heard discussed that I'd be supportive of is the idea of allowing somebody to have a professional certify that their CO is up to date and meets what's on the property. As you mentioned, I think that there's, you know, changes in the building department, a new department head, and other hires that are going to help the process for people to get an updated CO on their own. But providing another option, I think, would be great. So that people, you know, I don't want this to be the issue if something is totally compliant and they have a CO that is accurate. I would hate for, there would be a waiting period for us to get to it to be the issue. And providing another option is something I wholeheartedly support. So thanks for looking into it. I think I look forward to your specific recommendations and moving forward.
But in the meantime, there are folks that, you know, they're up against closing deadlines because, you know, they've got mortgages and whatnot, and our building department has been working individually in those cases so folks can make their desired date.
Two points. One, Councilman, thank you. I believe that the purpose of this law is protection, and we are hearing positive things regarding the intention and ultimately the results. However, there are issues. And the worst thing we could do is throw the baby out with the bathwater. We'll find the right process. And Supervisor, I think you hit on an extraordinary point that if there's an issue with a specific property, contact the town. Contact the town. The building department is very receptive and listens. So thank you.
Thanks, Jake. Okay. Next up, we have the short-term rental discussion that's going to be led by Deputy Supervisor Kate Rogers. So I know, Emery, you're going to pull that presentation up, and then Kate can get started.
Thank you. While Emery's pulling the presentation up, I want to frame this discussion today as a solicitation for input from both the board and the community. The discussion, today's discussion on short-term rentals focuses on a type of short-term rental that we're seeing happening in the town and actually across, I think, the globe, and that is an investor-driven short-term rental. And not the tradition of local people renting their homes to supplement their annual income, which has been a part of the tradition in East Hampton since it was founded. As food prices and all else rise, I want to take care that we are focusing on the issue at hand, and that is a commercialization of residential properties or neighborhoods by investors and creating businesses in residential neighborhoods in the town of East Hampton. This type of investing came to light during the process to recommend code changes to the gross floor area. The committee began to see a correlation between size, number of bedrooms, amenities, and short-term rental properties. As we will see in this presentation, there are connections. As we focus on housing affordability and the degradation of our natural resources, one source of, some of those sources of food sources for our community, such as the degradation of our scallop industry and our fishery, it is important to know how our housing stock is being used today and then decide what, if any, actions are needed to specifically address the concerns of commercialization of our neighborhood. So, Emery, this is Slide 2. Okay. So this presentation will present data from the short-term rental industry and offer possible actions the town may take. A little background. In 2015, the then-town board passed a new law which required registration of houses being rented in East Hampton. The law created the rental registry. The town, and in the enabling legislation for the creation of that code, a section which is 199, it states that the town of East Hampton recognizes that there are rising concerns and incidences of single-family residences being overcrowded, utilized to share houses, motels, or other transient housing accommodations. Safety personnel with additional information to ensure compliance with the legal usage of properties throughout the town and to protect the health, safety, and welfare of rental property occupants, as well as the community at large. The town requires more and better information and regulation of rental properties. The adoption of a rental registry will provide information on the quantity and location of rental properties throughout the town and provide valuable information to public safety personnel in ensuring compliance with the provisions of the town code. In the next section, I'll be talking about the existing regulations in the town of East Hampton. So first, we have Chapter 255-1161, and this is the definition and purpose of the East Hampton Single Family Residential District Regulations. And that verbiage, "single-family residential district regulations," is how we define neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods in our codes. And in this code, we recognize that there are appropriate supplemental uses as well for the benefit of our community. So residential neighborhoods, an important local, important function of local land use regulation is the establishment and protection of single-family residence districts in which tranquil, healthy, and safe neighborhood environments are maintained for the quiet enjoyment of resident homeowners and their families, and in which the children of such families may be properly raised. Such residential areas provide a setting suitable primarily for the town's permanent and seasonal residents who are living, working, going to school, paying taxes, et cetera, in East Hampton. The needs of transients, on the other hand, are best accommodated in other districts. And I just want to say that the word "transients" is, equals a short-term occupancy, such as a hotel. Someone coming out for a weekend and staying in a hotel. I just wanted to make it kind of clear what transient means in this code. Nearly all, nearly any business enterprise conducted for the purpose of making a profit may sacrifice other values critical to residential neighborhoods. Thus, the courts have long recognized the right of municipalities to entirely segregate business uses from such districts and to otherwise prevent unwarranted commercialization from encroaching therein, including that commercialization caused by the misuse of single-family residences. In particular, the purely commercial use of such structures by absentee owners possesses problems for adjacent properties and residents, as well as to legitimate businesses located in commercial districts, paying business taxes and must be strictly limited. The regulations in these sections and throughout this chapter recognize these principles and are destined to further the same, while at the same time permitting certain compatible activities in single-family residences that can serve to supplement an owner's income without risking harm to surrounding residences or entire residential neighborhoods. Next slide, Emery. And these are the supplemental uses that are allowed and recognized when owners and the owner's family are not in residence. Monthly rentals, seasonal monthly rentals, and short-term rentals, and I'll come back to this in a second. And all of these types of rentals require registration with the town's rental registry when the owner is not living on the property. And what we have, the ability to have short-term rentals in our town, they're limited to stays of not more than two weeks by definition, this is a little confusing, and limited to only two times in a six-month period. However, this limitation is not found in the rental registry code section. Where this is found, and it's a little obscure to find, is in 255-120, the definition of a motel. So a single-family residence which is rented to, occupied by a tenant or tenants, in terms of not more than two weeks, on three or more occasions during any six-month period, shall be deemed to be unlawfully operating as a motel for all purposes under this chapter. So I know that's a little confusing, and we'll get into more of that in future slides. Emery, next slide, please. So Slide 6. This is the number of rental registry registrations that have happened yearly since the inception of the code. And this is where we require all homeowners renting their homes to register with the rental registry and to attest to the information they supply in a self-inspection checklist. The rules state that any advertisement, be it online, be it in newspapers, be it anywhere, must contain the rental registry number, that the tenant information be included as well as the rental time period. And if there are changes, then the new information must be supplied to the town. Right now, this is overseen by the building department. And as you can see, enforcement without technology, just as a preview, will be discussed later as essential. We need for technology for monitoring for compliance that the numbers themselves speak to this issue. So our current fee for the rental registry is a two-year registration for $200. So the total of rental registries issued by the town since the inception of the law was, is 12,179 to date. Next slide, section will be a short-term rental market analysis. So what is AirDNA? AirDNA is a leading provider of real estate data and analytics for the short-term rental market and vacation rental industry, offering tools and insight to help hosts, property managers, and investors succeed. The platform uses advanced technology to collect and analyze market data, providing users with detailed market insights, revenue estimates, competitive analysis, and performance tracking tools to identify profitable opportunities and optimize their rental businesses. Now, AirDNA is the example that I selected for this presentation. There are many providers of such analytics and data to help businesses with their profit. Next slide, Emery, please. How does it work? AirDNA and these other providers gather data by scraping, by scraping public information from short-term rental platforms, analyzing it with artificial intelligence, and using it to provide accurate market intelligence. What, next slide, please. What does AirDNA provide? And again, it's an example of all of these types of platforms. It provides market data and analytics. It provides interactive maps where users can explore markets, visualize key metrics like occupancy rates and competition, revenue estimates and performance tracking. The platform provides revenue estimates and tools to track the performance of properties, helping users set competitive pricing and understand earning potential. Competitive insights. Users can benchmark their performance against other listings and analyze competitor data to stay ahead. Emerging market identification. Using certain tools that help users spot high-potential up-and-coming markets to invest in before they become saturated. And pacing data. The platform shows future booking trends, offers insight into future demand, and availability to help hosts and investors make informed decisions. So who uses it? Well, according to their website, hosts and small, small and individual hosts use AirDNA to help price their listings AirDNA to help price their listings and monitor their competition. Investors use it for growing in professional investors to use the platform to find profitable investment in properties, assess market trends, and make informed decisions. And property managers use it. Professionals use AirDNA data to manage their portfolios, identify market-wide trends, and provide services to their clients. One metric that I'd like to talk about before we get into the type of data that is provided on the websites is RevPAR. And I didn't know what this is, and it's a key metric, so I looked for the information. And RevPAR is revenue per available rental. It is a hospitality industry metric that measures how well a property generates revenue. And what they take into consideration is average daily rate and occupancy rate are two metrics that are used to calculate RevPAR. A higher RevPAR indicates a successful combination of pricing and occupancy strategies, while lower RevPAR might suggest areas for improving. So, the recommendation is, you need a little charm in hospitality to run a great Airbnb, but you need razor-sharp acumen to really drive business success. Next slide, please. So, what this particular website does, and they all analyze East Hampton's rental data, is provide an overview and some key metrics of the town of East Hampton. East Hampton has what is considered two full submarkets. So, East Hampton itself, and that includes the Hamlets, west of Montauk is a submarket for analytics. And then after I go through East Hampton, you'll see that I also have Montauk Analytics, because that is a second submarket that's -- that is located in our town. So, if you look at this page, and I hope it's big enough for folks to see it, you'll see that our submarket score is 46, which is a pretty good score. The -- there's a 53 -- this is out of 100. There's a 53 for rental demand, a score of 85 for revenue growth. There's a lower score of 49 because it's seasonal and not year-round for profits, and a 61 out of 100 because the regulations are favorable. So, what we can see here is the -- this is a year-long metric. You can go back further and do multiple years, but I took a 12-month period. So, what we see is the average daily rate in the town of East Hampton to rent a property is 1,029K. The RevPAR score, and this is a very good one, it's up 20% in the last six -- last 12 months, is $609.60. The little blue -- the little purple dots represent the amount of active rentals that there are currently in this submarket, which again includes areas west of Napier. Next page. Another analytic is the number of listings in East Hampton. So, we can see that currently, there is, and this is for September, there is a -- it's 3% down because of the seasonality, but it is at 1,343 active current rentals. The next chart shows the listings by rental channel. The vast majority is Airbnb, but they both combine. And there are other platforms. It's not just Airbnb and VBR that advertise short-term rentals. Bonvoy Marriott, so the hotel industries are also getting into this type of short-term rental advertising on their platform. And of course, every platform charges a fee for advertising these rentals. Also, you can see rental growth in the last three years. We are very seasonal. Listings by annual availability, and this is by the amount of nights, and most availability is for between 1 and 90 nights. And then listing by property type, by far, an entire home outweighs a private room in this type of short-term rental listings. Next slide, Emery. And this shows another metric for investors, which is the East Hampton occupancy rate. So, we see that the occupancy rate for East Hampton over -- from January to August is the average is 49%. The average length of stay is four days, which I think is a very surprising metric to me. And the lead booking time, so the people are booking 63 days ahead. Also, the bottom chart shows you the percentage of the month that was occupied over the last 12 months. And we can clearly see that the seasonality of these rentals is why you get the little lower metric on the yearly average. Next slide, Emery, is the East Hampton average daily rate by bedroom. So, as you can see, the bottom line, it's kind of a dark greenish or dark teal is one bedroom, then we go to two bedrooms, next line is three bedrooms, four bedrooms, five bedrooms, and six bedrooms. So, you can see a correlation between the number of bedrooms and your average daily rate, according to this data. Next slide, Emery. And if you just recall that the last slide showed that the average stay was four nights, when we're looking at East Hampton yearly revenue, the average revenue is $134,500 per year, which is up 21%. The entire -- renting an entire place is $141,600. A house is $141,500, and apartment, you can make $53,000 a year approximately. And again, the graph shows the average rental over the past 12 months, by month. Next slide, Emery. And because Montauk is considered its own submarket in this realm, I'm going to show you the Montauk overview of the same metrics. How is the submarket performing? It's a 42 out of 100. Again, investability is 46. Rental demand is a 55 out of 100. Revenue growth is 82 out of 100. The score dips because it's seasonal, and 56 out of 100 because there's favorable regulations. Again, we see the annual revenue by month, the occupancy rate, the daily average rate, and that RevPAR score. Next, Emery. Here, we see the number of listings. So, just for Montauk, it's an additional 531 listings, and that's in addition to the 1,300 that we saw for East Hampton active in this time period. Listings by channel, listings by rental size, listings by annual availability, and that's the number of nights that they're seeing, and the listing by rental type. Obviously, house is the majority of listings that we're seeing. Again, each purple dot is an active listing in Montauk. Montauk occupancy rate. It's a 49% occupancy rate, and the length of stays, average length of stays in Montauk is 3.4 days, and the average booking time is 70 days. Next slide. The average daily rate by number of bedrooms is apparent in this. Again, it just shows that the more bedrooms you have, the more money you will make per -- you can charge per night. The next slide, Emery, is the Montauk revenue analysis. So, you're looking at an average revenue of $101,600 per year in a 12-month period. So, I now move to a specific -- on the next slide, an investor story that was -- this is one of many investor success stories that are being published in financial papers. This is from the Business Insider. I have it annotated. All of my slides are annotated, and the headline is, which caught my attention, "I quit my job to flip homes in the Hamptons full-time. The house I bought for $630,000 is now worth $1.8 million." And I'm going to take -- I took out on the next slide some key paragraphs in the article. So, first of all, "We never believed that your first purchase had to be your primary home. In 2017, we were still renting in Brooklyn, expecting our first child, when we bought a three-bedroom home in East Hampton for $635,000." Next, "How it developed: A person grew their social media brand early, and it helped make renovations cheaper. One of the first steps the person took was hiring a freelance designer on Upwork to build a brand identity. For 2000, she created my website, brand identity, logos, colors, and official fonts. I think it really helped me land deals with brands. For instance, I work with Home and Kitchen Fixer Company for three properties. They gifted me an entire house worth of products, probably about $20,000 worth, for showing them off during my renovation videos on Instagram. It definitely helps with the ROI of the eventual sale," and I believe that's the rate of
Return on investment.
Return on investment. Thank you. "Now, the goal is to sell one house each year while renting out the other two on Airbnb. Last year, our two properties in the Hamptons brought in $360,000 in Airbnb revenue. Both have five bedrooms and pools. I only invest in homes in East Hampton because I like its rules regarding short-term rentals. There are minimum-two-week stays, but with four exceptions, you can use them throughout the year, which are usually time around holidays like Thanksgiving." So, the point of this is that this type of short-term rental activity in our town is not based on the local person renting their house out seasonally or even for a short-term rental to supplement their income. What we're seeing is investors buying houses up in East Hampton, not living in East Hampton, and using them, in my opinion, as businesses in our commercial districts. This is the type of --
In our residential
-- residential district, sorry. This is the type of short-term rental investor support that is now available to folks that seek these types of investments. There's platforms and listing sites, and they're listed here. There's more than what's listed. These are examples: Property management companies, and these firms handle the day-to-day operation of short-term rentals, including marketing, guest services, cleaning, and maintenance. And what surprised me the most is there's actual lenders and financiers available. These companies provide the necessary capital for investors to purchase or renovate properties. And there's mentioned East Street Capital, which is a leading lender for short-term rental investors, offering various loan products for financing these properties. So, what are the known or studied impacts of short-term rentals on communities? This is the next section. Emery, next slide.
Page 30, Emery.
So, there's positive impacts, and there are negative impacts. The positive impacts that have been studied are increased tourism spending and local business revenue, supplemental income for homeowners, wider visitor lodging options, and tourism dispersal, potential uplift in property values in some areas, and I think we've certainly seen that, and revitalization of underused housing stock. Now, that does not apply to East Hampton. That applies in other areas. Negative impacts: Housing. For housing negative impacts, it reduces the long-term rental supply, increases housing costs and rents, there's affordability pressures and resident displacement, and concentration of short-term rental in high-demand areas. Negative impacts to the community is noise, trash, and parking disturbances, erosion of neighborhood character and social cohesions of the community, uneven competition with hotels and lodges in our commercial districts, and strains on local services and infrastructure. In governance, it is difficult to monitor and enforce compliance through traditional methods. And we see that with putting the onus, in this particular case, on a homeowner through the Rental Registry, and then trying to monitor the online platforms to make sure that even that number is present. And if you went to any of these platforms today, you'd see there are so many listings that do not have even that compliance. There's complexity in coordinating with the multiple platforms that are now available. There's regulatory loopholes, as we can see, with the average short-term rental being four nights in East Hampton and 3.4 nights in Montauk, that there are regulatory loopholes exploited by hosts or investors and administrative and legal costs for towns. So, how can municipalities regulate short-term rentals? And I don't have code proposals today because, again, I'm going to restate that this is -- I'd like to -- my goal for today was bringing to attention to this matter, providing some data of what we know is happening in East Hampton, and then beginning the discussion on what the town board and soliciting input from the community on what would be sensible regulations on short-term rentals. So, one of the ways that the state, through counties, have started to deal with the negative impacts of short-term rentals is through a landmark short-term rental registry law that the state created, and that Rental Registry, short-term in this case, is defined as less than 30 days, and it allows counties to opt into a program to track and regulate vacation rentals and require short-term rental operators to remit sales tax on their bookings. Suffolk County took advantage of this law in 2023 and added short-term rentals to the motel tax, the occupancy tax, in June 1st of 2023. And it said, "Every facility providing short-term lodging, which is less than 30 days by their definition, for a fee in Suffolk County is required to collect an occupancy tax from persons occupying such rooms at the rate of 5.5% of the per-diem rental rate charged for each room." And that law became effective June 1st, 2023. It applies to all lodging facilities, including residences and tourist homes, not just traditional motels and hotels. And there's -- the following definitions are defined. You can find them in Chapter 523, Article II of the Suffolk County Code. More recently this year, the Suffolk County Controller, John Kennedy, has approved a groundbreaking voluntary collection agreement with a short-term rental platform, Airbnb, on June 10th, 2025. With this signing, Airbnb itself will be responsible for the admittance of all lodging taxes. And finally, in the last section here, is some discussion points of what East Hampton can do. And for me, I would advocate for this, and I think the budget discussion was a good one to have today because I hope we'll be sending a recommendation to Becky for providing for a third-party software monitoring of platforms. There's a number of vendors that do this currently. Southhold is a community that just started with one of these companies as they're kind of experiencing the same impacts. And for me, you can't know what you need to do until you know what's happening out there. So, I think this is a critical step. It has automated crawling and parcel owner matching they're able to do. They can data-share agreements or subpoenas and cross-check with Registry Tax and Complaints and provide us that information. We can also institute a verify or block mechanism through these platforms, where platforms must verify that the Rental Registry number is present and have it on all advertising before they take the booking. Unregistered or over-the-cap listings can be blocked. This was based on a New York City Local Law 18, and the Santa Monica precedent for instituting a verify or block mechanism has been upheld in court. Other actions that the town board can take: Adopt a code section that is updated specifically for short-term rentals. Educate public platforms and the public. Procure vendor contracts for the monitoring that I just spoke about. Launch the verification compliance for our rental registration. Some other communities and in tourist areas have adopted a policy, a code, that the short-term rental property, and if someone owns more than one in the town, at least one of them must be the owner's primary residence. Increase the fees to deal with the added expenses that will be incurred by the town. Ensure proof of compliance with the Suffolk County tax requirements. Impose our own transient occupancy tax. And I know that there are others that I haven't listed here for this presentation. And with that, I thank you all for listening to that lengthy presentation and open it up to discussion.
I'll kick off with this one. Look, it's one where I take Teddy Roosevelt's advice, which is tread lightly but carry a big stick. I, you know, I think that there's a reason that state and the county have implemented taxes in this area, and largely, it's the biggest revenue driver in the town as a whole. When you kind of look at the rough numbers, it's estimated that short-term rentals generate over $100 million in revenue for local homeowners. Now, that's some local homeowners getting that. It is increasingly becoming professionalized in the industry as you're having people come in and do that, but I think there's a lot of local people who will continue to rely on this and may have more than one property, and that is their job. They might have four or five properties, and that is their income source. So, I think that we have to be very cognizant of that as we move forward with this. I think we have to also acknowledge, you know, the blind fact, which is we're tourist des destination. And with that comes complications. It's one of the same reasons when we look at the airport and we kind of go back and forth as to what the future is. And to be, you know, a primary tourist destination, as Jim Brandigi says, you need to have an airport. And, you know, to continue to support the tourism industry out here, I think it's important, you know, for restaurants and retail stores and other ancillary businesses to survive, to tread very carefully when you're talking about changes that are going to affect that tourism industry. You know, I think in terms of the problems that this industry creates, there are a variety that are potentially there, but I think it's really important, before we make any changes, to have that clear data on it. How many noise complaints come from short-term rentals versus commercial properties? Is that a verifiable fact? I think it's anecdotal to say it's there, but we can pull that data from PD and make sure that we're making these decisions based on clear data instead of anecdote. I think that it's just-- We have to be very careful we're not pushing away visitors in doing this. I appreciate Gloria's earlier comments, and actually, I think probably related with regards to the cost of residences out here and the potential impact this has had on that. But changes here and something that, you know, takes away from revenue streams for property owners will also impact property owners' property prices in the long run. And that's something that taxpayers happen to be cognizant of, that if we make these changes, is there then a risk that your property value comes down? For a lot of people, that continues to be their primary asset, and I think we have to be cognizant of that as well. I think in terms of, you know, the impact this has on local housing, it's interesting. I mean, one of the ways to look at this is, you know, school populations. I know from Montauk School, you know, the school population there has gone up, it's gone down. You know, it's relatively been at the same number for the last two to three decades. Springs, I know, is, from what I understand, relatively overpopulated from a school population, and, you know, it's a challenge there. East Hampton has been relatively consistent. So, you know, is it taking away housing from local families? Again, I'd love to see the data that supports that from something outside of the school populations if it's there. With that said, I do think that this is changing the nature, potentially, of the town we live in. And the more this becomes commercialized by larger outside entities versus being operated by local people or local businesses, I think the less control we have over it. In terms of implementing software to help us to get an understanding of where this industry is and what it actually looks like on a big scale, I am open to that. I do know there's one piece in there that contradicts with one of the ADU recommendations I'm making, which is regards to short-term rentals, that it doesn't have to be your primary property for a short-term rental to be in there. So, that's a proposed code change we have coming forward, so I would be against that change from my perspective. I appreciate you bringing this forward. I understand why. But again, as I said, I think as we move forward with this, we have to be incredibly careful about the much larger effect this is going to have on our local economy.
My comments are short, but it goes back to the first day of the town speech or given by the madam supervisor. We don't want to be treating East Hampton like a commodity. We need to be treating East Hampton like a community. And if you're saying that the analytics are coming back, that there's many large LLC investors that are treating like a commodity, I would look forward to moving forward to try to find other ways that we can continue to treat it like a community. But at the same time, Tom is correct on there. My family, for 50 years, is out here, has rented our houses, means to put kids through school, buy cars, and other things. So, we have to make sure that that doesn't affect that traditional form of revenue and resources for our community members out here. But treating things like a commodity is something that I want to make sure that we impose restrictions on.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I think this is obviously a real issue. I hear about it all the time from residents. I think everybody will acknowledge that this is changing things. But like all issues, I think we have to address them with balance, and I think that Dave and Tom have hinted at that and Kate in her presentation as well. Our neighborhoods are changing. I mean, there are houses in neighborhoods, I think everybody sees them, that are purely commercial, that they're no longer homes, they're rentals. And that's a dangerous trend, for sure. I don't think we want to have, you know, purely commercial activities in our residential neighborhoods. However, Dave and Tom both acknowledge, and I know Kate does as well, that, you know, there's a long tradition of, you know, longtime residents renting out to sometimes longtime seasonal visitors, you know, people who rent their house to the same family every August or every July. And we don't want to jeopardize that. I think that we have to acknowledge that tourism is a big part of our community, but it can only be a part of our community. We have to have a complete community where year-round residents can also have places to stay and other parts of our economy thrive as well. And I do think this strikes at the housing crisis if more and more of our residential neighborhoods become purely commercial. But I think we have to tread lightly in that we don't want to, you know, prevent the people who rent their house out for part of the summer to individuals to help be able to afford to live here. So, again, I think that the whole thing involves balance. I certainly support addressing it and looking into it, specific solutions. You know, this was an introduction. I would love to hear from the community out there and frankly, from people who might have part of their livelihoods be, you know, made from this. Because I think we-- Again, it's a balance. We live in a very beautiful place. A lot of people want to come here. We want to support that. That helps our economy. But we need to make sure that we don't become purely seasonal and that we have a healthy, vibrant, year-round community that we've always had. So, I look forward to talking about this, you know, and all the nuance that it involves in more detail in the coming months.
Thank you all.
Well, I just-- I know that Southhold has hired a vendor to track and monitor and just give them an understanding of what's happening in their short-term rental market. And Supervisor Krupski's talked about this a little bit at East End Supervisors and Mayor's Association meeting a few months back. So, I'm guessing they went out for RFP for that.
Yes.
Do you know what it's, you know, costing them, what their agreement is?
No, I haven't gotten that far in the research. I wanted to, you know, make sure that if we go out to RFP, that I'm not in contact. I did reach out to Southhold. They gave me a contact from one of these vendors, but I don't want to do that. I do recommend, however, that we at least get proposals to see what this would cost us if we wanted to move forward. I think in the long run, if we look at the fees right now-- And again, I think what Southhold did-- I'm sorry, what Newport, Rhode Island, did, which is course the tourist-based economy, coastal economy, by looking at a primary residence-- And this is not for affordable dwelling unit, which is a different kettle of fish altogether. This is for rentals. So, if one-- If you own more than one house in the town of East Hampton, I know plenty of people that were able to pick up cottages. It's an important supplemental income. It also can be sometimes where family members live in need in between any kind of supplemental income. These are part of our culture, but saying that it has to be a primary residence for investment-type purposes is completely different than affordable dwelling units, where you'd want to maybe put your own staff, et cetera, et cetera. And I do support that. But I do think the first thing we have to do is to-- And it kind of talks about what Tom has recommended, is to collect the data of exactly what's happening. And then base solutions on what that data is, where we're lacking in compliance of the rules that we already have. Any of this type of data, it's essential because it's online platforms to use technology, just kind of like we just saw Heath tell us how we have to use technology to help us keep safe. It's doable, and there's plenty of companies now out there helping municipalities know what's happening in their municipality so they can make definitive decisions. I don't include a ban like New York City did in recognition of the local economy and the importance of it, but I do think we can do a better job of ensuring that it is an allowable supplemental use of a residential property of a neighborhood outside of a commercial district versus a strictly commercial venture. And what I showed today, hopefully, is that it is no longer just a supplemental use. High-demand areas such as East Hampton are becoming more attractive to this type of business investment, and that is not something I think we want for this town. And so, my first recommendation would be to at least gather proposals and have a further discussion on if we should go out for RFP on the technology.
Okay.
Thank you, Amory.
Do would folks support moving forward with an RFP to see about getting third-party software monitoring to help assist? Because I know our, you know, our code enforcement officers, they're using the platforms, right? They're on there trying to understand. But, you know, it's gotten pretty crafty. They don't give addresses. You're just looking at the house. I'm trying to think back when, you know, over the summer when we were giving the police statistics. I remember saying, like, we had, you know, four commercial noise violations, to your point, Tom, but we had dozens, and that was just what PD was responding to. That wasn't what code enforcement was also responding to. So, we know that there's, you know, folks that are, you know, about music playing after nine o'clock, or there's parties and whatnot. But, I mean, I think, you know, data is, you know, going to give us a clear picture of possibly what's going on, and then we take it from there.
And again, this isn't for seasonal rentals, which is our tradition as well. Ian, you were speaking about, you know, people renting out a house for a month. This is specifically looking at short-term rentals and knowing what their impacts are in our community and knowing if there's compliance with our existing rental registry laws. And then, to me, kind of looking at the platforms like the state did and the county did and say, you have to monitor. The onus is on you, not the homeowner, because they are really-- The profits that the short-term rental platforms are making is incredible.
No, I understand. I just was pointing out that, and I understand this is short-term, which is by definition less than two weeks.
I just wanted to make sure it was clear to everyone. And soliciting your input is critical to any decisions that we make.
And I think we also have to bring the chambers--
Yep.
--you know, into the conversation, right? Because when people are renting out houses for-- It's, you know, it's hurting our hotel motel business to some extent. I mean, we've heard stories that they're--
I challenge you. When they're charging $1,000 a night, I don't--
That's what they're charging. That's what they're charging.
I don't think that's fair to say they all are.
No.
I mean, smaller hotels are definitely not charging that. And I've been hearing instances where they don't have full occupancy, family-run hotels, not big corporations.
Right. No, look, I think in terms of collecting the data, I'm open to it. I would just like to really clarify and be very clear with the public about what sort of data is we're going to be collecting about their properties and their businesses. But I'm open to doing an RFP to collect that data. I just think maybe we have one more discussion as to what it is we--
Oh, absolutely. Probably more than that. And it's, you know, the data that they're collecting is only what's publicly available.
On the platform.
What's on the platform.
People data, it's platform data.
Yeah, and I agree that I'm very open to it. I think it's a good idea, but the specifics are going to matter. And again, back to the short-term rental, we all identify a problem. All I'm saying is that we have to make sure that, you know, saying we need a solution, that is the right solution and that it targets exactly what the issue is and not something beyond that. So, we're all in agreement. I just think the details are going to matter a lot.
So, I'm not necessarily open for an RFP yet. I have to do some more research about how other municipalities are dealing with. I understand if I might be the outlier here. I understand where this is. I fully believe that we're not looking to punish the year-round resident. It is more the corporations coming in there than two. But this one came on my plate a little bit late. Sorry. As I know, I've been traveling. Let me do a little more research on it and maybe another discussion.
Maybe what we could also do is ask some of the folks from Southhold to come to a work session, and let's understand their experience with working.
I would challenge asking them to come down here. I'll reach out to them.
They can zoom in.
I could also zoom in. Yeah, I would also like to put the message out there to the public, to the homeowners and the property owners who live out here. You know, please contact us with your feedback so we understand it fully.
Yeah, and to be clear, I agree with you, Dave. I don't think we're ready for an RFP yet because we have to, you know, dive in to find the specific criteria. So, I think, again--
Yeah, I don't think we're ready for an RFP either. We have to give us and the public much more information on that. But I would like to look into that as a first step.
Well, we should ask Jeannie because she has access to listservs for New York State to see, you know, we could collect, you know, other municipalities that have done it and just see what theirs look like.
Yep.
Yes. But I do think we are looking at commercial investments in our residential districts by investors who only seek to make profit and are not looking at being part of this community at all. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Kate. So, next up, Ian, you're up with the Maidstone Park Playground.
So, first of all, I just want to thank-- This is the Maidstone Park Playground. This has been in the works for some time. I want to acknowledge Kate and Kathy, who are previous liaisons and a committee. I probably left some members out who participated over the, you know, the development of this. Also, even without Heath's help, I just want to notice that I have these geometric shapes in the corners of this presentation, which was a small miracle. So, just-- I don't pat myself on the back too much, but that was a feat.
You didn't realize one of the job descriptions for being on the town board is how to do a PowerPoint.
That's right. But so, the committee members, you know, Lauren Bolger, she's here with us today, who does so much for Springs, Valerie King, Judith Groden, Bruce Engel, were the people most involved during my time, and I was liaison. There's been a lot of other help from-- I probably should have listed them here as well-- John Rooney, Steve O'Brien, and a lot of other departments in town. This plan has been run through the Planning Department, Natural Resources, and so, again, I was probably too sparse with the credit here, but that's the core committee. Next slide. The goals of this project were to renovate an existing playground. There's one piece of equipment there. I guess there used to be more that deteriorated and was removed, but there's a disturbed area in the clearing when you first enter Maidstone Park across from the baseball field. And one of the main goals was to provide equipment for toddlers in particular and younger children, where there's not a lot of options for playgrounds around town, and in addition to older children. You know, I think it's good to have a place where whole families can come and enjoy, but we definitely wanted to make sure we filled that hole for toddlers and young children. And then, the other-- You know, always, I think, you know, Tom will certainly talk about this, I'm sure, it's also important that we be as inclusive as possible. I know the ADA Committee, you know, is always focused on this, and that's a good thing. So, we wanted to make sure that there were inclusive elements to this playground as well. The committee felt very strongly when I came on as liaison that they wanted to keep it as natural as possible. You know, we didn't want a very plastic-feeling, you know, modern appearance to the entrance of a, you know, beautiful park set in nature. And we also wanted to contain the playground within the existing cleared area, which already exists around the playground. Again, some of it was disturbed. This plan does expand upon it a little bit, but it's all contained within the existing cleared area to minimize disturbance while also providing new opportunities to play. That brings us to the next slide, which are some of the challenges. You know, there were a lot of discussions about keeping this very, very natural and even, you know, using things like our own materials, wooden materials we'd put in place for kids to play around. And, you know, me growing up, spending a lot of time outside, I get it. Climbing trees and playing with stuff that's there is wonderful, but as a municipality, you know, we're required to use equipment that is certified and seen as safe for play. So, that limits our options a little bit, and it tailored-- It changed the way we thought about this playground. Another thing that, you know, I'm not a playground expert, so there are many new jobs about being on the town board and designing a playground, I guess we'll count as one of them. There's legally required separations of pieces of equipment. You can't just plop things out in a way that makes sense to you, that you can see, you know, children playing on. There are safety radiuses and different standards, and so, again, that was a limiting factor that we had to deal with when designing this playground. Another concern was wear and maintenance. We talked a lot about using wooden equipment or natural materials versus others, and speaking with buildings and grounds and others, you know, we wanted to make sure we acknowledged that this is near the water, their environmental conditions, and not only do we want a beautiful place where kids can play, we want it to last and make sure that we can maintain it over time. So, wear and maintenance concerns were a big part of the considerations as well. Next slide. The budget for this project, again, I can't take credit for that. That was set aside before my time, but it's $190,000. This plan-- This plan is to purchase equipment. So in going through this process, we are, are using a contract that exists for purchasing of equipment. For the actual installation, we would have to go out to bid eventually. But the total available budget is 190,000. The equipment cost in this contract with a discount through the Babylon contract is just over $100,000. We did do an estimate on what the installation would be, and it's 83,500, actually just a little bit under that. And that leaves us with some extra, just in case those bids come back different or there's, you know, small changes. So I, I think that we're on budget here. The idea here would be if there's support from the board and the community to move ahead with this purchase and then go out to bid and figure that part out.
Do you know what the lead time is, Ian, to order equipment? Is there-
Yeah, the lead, the lead time would be just over four weeks for it to, for it to be delivered. I spoke with the equipment supplier. And by the way, there's a piece of equipment that's already there by the same company. So it would, if this, this would, and that's in fairly decent shape with some small repair. We didn't want to trash it. So it's the same company and, and that person, he acknowledged, he said that when we order the equipment, by the time, if we have an RFP, we should be able to pick an installer before that equipment will be delivered. The equipment gets delivered straight to the installer and then they bring it with them.
Ah, okay.
And I, I did speak about that timing and it, it should all work out. But again, I, you know, I think we have to make sure we hear from the board and, and other members of the public. I did distribute this to the Springs community, people I know who have long listservs to try to make sure that we get the information out there beyond just this work session, but, you know, and behind the scenes as well. Now we just have a view of a rendering and obviously the, the setting around this is not exactly the area, but the playground shape and pieces of equipment layout is the same. So the, the piece you see in the, the left corner there is an existing piece of equipment that, you know, playground equipment's pretty expensive, it turns out. So I didn't want to trash that and start from scratch, again, with some small repairs. It's in fine shape and I thought we could add to it. One of the biggest things that people wanted were a swing set. You know, I think, I think children love swings and the committee felt strong and that should be a part of it. This configuration involves a toddler swing on the end, this flex swing, which is ADA compliant or inclusive, as, as the, the nomenclature is in the playground world, which is another thing I learned. And then two swings for, you know, older children. And by the way, if anybody had a, a strong opinion about the different mix of swings, we could change, you know, we could change that around a little bit. This just seemed like a good balance for, again, something for, for everybody, all different types of families and children. And that's from, that, that view would be from the southeast, so the current parking lot that we're looking at. Next slide. This shows a layout of each of the pieces of equipment that would be included. And again, the, the top, the top left corner is the existing piece, and then we built these other elements around. And you can see that even though the area was expanded a bit, there's, there's, there's not much extra space when you count these safety radiuses. And just in case anybody's looking very, very carefully and wants to think I'm breaking the rules by some overlap here, turns out you're allowed to have a little bit of overlap if there's stationary pieces of equipment. So in the top right-hand corner, there's one place at which those safety radiuses overlapped just slightly. I promise you all, that's safety and playground compliance. Next slide. This is a view from, you know, if you were standing back on the, the water side, looking back at the parking lot, showing the, the pieces of equipment. Next slide. And here is a, another person I, even in my, trying to make up for not giving enough credit originally, Bartabe Friedman helped me lay out the playground layout in the existing area so you can see how it fits in that clearing without needing to clear any additional trees. It'll just be a little bit of work to, to level out the ground. That's the aerial layout. Next slide. So now to the specific pieces of equipment that are there. The left-hand side here shows the new major piece of equipment. You know, it's a multi-component. We wanted to have it the most natural feel possible, so we chose natural colors. It's not an actual tree there, but it's a piece of equipment. I, I think it's a type of concrete, actually, that's made to look like a tree and feel natural. And, and again, that was sort of the aesthetic and the feel that we were going for there. The playground surface, this was something that was discussed quite a bit. Again, we wanted to be as natural as possible in that. This is engineered wood fiber, which basically looks like wood chips, but it's engineered to make sure that it meets safety standards. And there are, I'll, I'll just admit, there are problems with that material generally in that you have to replenish it. It, it does take some maintenance, but it is the, the least expensive thing that you can have and compared to, say, rubber mats that, that other playgrounds, more modern playgrounds use it. It met the aesthetic and the feel that the committee wanted. And it is importantly ADA compliant. Admittedly, it would probably be more difficult to wheel a wheelchair around here than a completely flat surface, but it was important to me and the committee that, that, that it made ADA compliant standards, and it does. Another thing that we actually talked quite a bit about was the, the edging. And, and again, this rendering is not perfect. We talked about edging it with wood or plastic and materials that could contain that engineered wood fiber. Turns out, and again, in the interest of keeping it as natural feeling as possible, we can berm up the existing soil and dig out in between to contain that wood fiber. So there's going to be a more natural border between the edge. And that was very, very important to some committee members. And so that was how the plan-
But with an entrance for, for wheelchairs, right?
Yeah, there's an exist, there's an existing entrance and as part of the, the cost estimate for installation, there's a, a concrete ramp that is not ADA compliant perfectly. That would be torn out and replaced with an ADA compliant.
It's not, huh?
What's that?
It's not ADA compliant.
No, even though they have the fence there to stop the wheelchairs that rolls down the steep hill. I don't think it is. It, it looks too steep to me.
Okay.
I, I could be wrong about that, but in any case, it, it needs to be adjusted to fit. So yeah, that will be part of, part of the project and the, and it would, it would come from the same area that it is in the parking lot. There might be ancillary projects in the parking lot with drainage and maybe, you know, restriping that are not exactly part of this project that, that could be in addition to. There's benches on all four sides here for, for parents and-
Is that in the cost estimate?
It is. The benches are all in the cost estimate. And next slide. So now to get into some of the specific pieces of equipment, again, not a playground expert myself. This omni spinner was something that stood out very early on as a piece of equipment that, I spoke with two or three representatives from different playground companies and everybody had similar pieces of equipment like this that were both enjoyable for children to play on and also accessible for all sorts of ages. This is actually, you know, listed as good for, for children from two to five years old and five to 12, you know. And it's also ADA accessible, inclusive. You can transfer from wheelchair into this. Children can be involved in spinning on it and also helping to, to, to push. So it seemed to be cast a very, very wide net to, for, for children to, all different types of children to enjoy, different ages. And also, again, I think being enjoyable is important and everybody says that kids love these things. Next slide. The flex swing, we actually looked at something you might have seen before, freedom swings, which, which look a little bit different, which are ADA compliant, they're inclusive swings. This is a newer type of swing, but is also inclusive. And again, the feedback I've heard from playground representatives say it's very, very popular for all different types of ages and all different abilities. So I was, you know, I included that. Again, the, the makeup, this would take up a full bay in the swing set, but we can change the configuration of what type of swings we have, if there's any strong feelings about that. This was actually a, a sub for two of those freedom swings because there was very popular feedback. Next slide. This is a cozy dome. Another thing we talked about was including sort of a playhouse or a place for children to go, because kids, you know, like to do that. This isn't exactly that, but it gives the opportunity for, for some climbing and also entering inside. And again, in the interest of, of casting a wide net to, to allow as many children as possible to enjoy this, this is listed as, as good for ages two to five and five to 12, so, so whole families can enjoy. It also is listed as inclusive. You know, I, I'm not exactly sure what the, you know, what the standards are for that, but this is something that, that was listed as inclusive for children of all abilities. Next slide. The log crawl tunnel, again, meeting that wide age range. This was listed as two to five, five to 12. You can climb on it, crawl through it, which, which was appealing. And it also, in the interest of keeping things looking very, very natural, of course, this isn't a real wooden log, but it, but it looks like it. And I think it, it made sense also for, for kids as they move across the playground, can go from one thing to the other, and there's a little bit of a natural course there. And then the last slide. This is just another view of the, of the playgrounds. And again, I want to thank the committee. They've put up with, you know, delays. I know at times probably frustrated with me and, and things take time, but I'm, I'm happy we're here. I'm excited to present this and I would love to, to hear feedback from the board and the public. This is a project I'd like to move forward with very, you know, in, in, over the next couple of meetings, I'd like to make sure we have any feedback that people have because I want to, we are able to get a discount on this equipment through the Babylon contract, which will expire eventually. And if we decide to move forward with this project, I want to make sure we get an RFP out to, to coincide, to make sure that the installation coincides with the delivery of equipment. So with that, I'll turn it over.
Does that require a bid, Ian, for the installation?
Oh, a bid, I'm sorry. Yes, not an RFP. You're absolutely right. With that, I will just open it up to questions from the board and-
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm going to caveat this by kind of saying that looking at the town's playgrounds has been one of the primary focuses of the Disabilities Advisory Committee and where we can make improvements. One thing that's really been identified as, as lacking in the town's armory here is, you know, with regards to neurodivergent children, specifically autistic children, and some of the kind of key criteria for what makes a suitable playground for, for children with, with autism. I, I think on the whole, this has done a really good job in addressing that. You know, things like sensory-friendly design features, inclusive play areas is great. The one thing I would love to see here that would actually get this over the edge for me would be fencing this area off. I know I emailed this to you, I know there's potentially some, you know, pushback from the committee on this, but I, I, I think, you know, given the proximity to water here, you know, given what we've seen that's happened elsewhere on the, I'm recently with kids leaving schools, you know, it's, it's just, it's a safety feature. I, I would love for this kind of to be the town's autistic-friendly playground, frankly. And then if, if we could get the fencing, I think it would meet that criteria. Otherwise, totally supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian, for bringing this. I think, looking at the global approach to the park there, Maidstone Park, there's a, there's a flooding issue down there with drainage. We can look to fix that drainage also with the parking. We can start working either with our off-contracts, not part of this project, but potentially piggybacking into this project then too, and that's more a beautification of functionality. We need more parking that be clear of that parking, sorry, that, that flood mark there for even the softball and Little League down there then too. I understand where Tom's coming from as far as the sensory aspects of the, of the parks. I know we have that over the former CDCH one, which was built for that. I disagree with fencing it in. I think that the openness of this parking location it is is one of the, one of the beauties of having it there, but I do understand those concerns. More, more or less, I'm looking forward to having this installed and potentially ready for when we play softball in Little League down there.
Thanks, Ian.
Yeah, I, I really applaud you for getting this forward, Ian. It's a, it's a project that had a lot of emotion attached to it and, in a good way, a lot of community ideas. But being able to narrow that down to fit the space and still have the natural beauty unobstructed, I think is great. I think this Maidstone Park is, is a gift because it is multi-generational. There's so many uses for Maidstone Park that people can enjoy and do enjoy, from walking your dog around the loop to swimming, to, to barbecuing, to enjoying your family and, and playing sports. So I think this will be an excellent addition. For me, one of the things I really saw parents struggle with was the, the layout, and especially if you had more than one child with you, trying to keep track of them. And then the parents just always were just standing around. They had no place to sit as well. And so I really appreciate opening up that seating area. I would put more benches for folks. It's nice to be able to socialize while you're watching, you have your all eyes on your children. As far as fencing, I would really need to understand more the importance of the fencing or what it would look like there. I mean, none of the other areas there are fenced. The barbecue area is not fenced, the beach is open, so I'm not, I, I don't know if I support the idea of fencing it off for this particular playground. But other than that, I, I think it's great that you're bringing this forward. And I remember swings being very important to people and the inclusivity that you're making sure that this equipment can be used.
When you handed it off to me, that was, that was on your list.
I gave you books.
I appreciate that.
So I, I think it's great. The surface is interesting too. So it's, what does it feel like? What, is it loose?
Five bar.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Is it five bar? Because I know that our buildings and grounds, right, they, they get a-
It is, yeah.
A load of five bar every spring and then go around and fill it in and, and, you know, because that's how it's always been. Because right now, I think it's trimmed in wood and, and we, every spring, folks, we go in there and-
Yeah, so there's five-
And leave it up.
There's five bar that's put around the town's facilities and that's pretty much for drop rating, you know, let's say the fall, fall ratings on there. So it's engineered wood, gets installed. There's a lot of maintenance to it. We have looked into putting down another type of matted, pelotized matting underneath, a soft also, but that is extremely expensive.
But how's the seasonability of it? How is it winter?
It, it, it winters, but for maybe 15 years. You know, the cost of putting five bar every year, you know, for 30 years is probably going to be the same, but you put it only for 15 years for that matting. I do like having the five bar here, but there might be other locations we might want to look to change at. I just know it's extremely expensive to do so. You, you'll probably double your budget.
And it's a good point. I actually had a, a conversation with Steve O'Brien, who's always helpful in these matters and in everything else. And, you know, maintenance is a real issue, but, you know, drainage has been an issue here too. I think, I think in this setting, the more natural feel, and honestly, even for water infiltration, I think that the five bar or EWR, what they're calling it, the same, same material, I think it's appropriate. And, and I know that there might be an effort to, to resurface other playgrounds in different settings with that material, which I fully support. But in this case, based on the committee feedback, and I think the area, this felt right.
Also, if we went to the other direction, let's be honest, it's just going to delay the project. I think, you know, the residents of Springs deserve this right now.
Yeah, and I think the idea of addressing that drainage issue that's been there for years is, this is the time to do it as well. It's, it cuts off a lot of parking and creates, you know, a mosquito pond there.
Yeah. I, I feel like this is the, like, you know, you, you paint your kitchen and then you realize, well, your kitchen's attached to your living rooms and now you've got to paint the living room because, you know, the, we, we do need to address the drainage and create more parking there. Because I think that this is going to be really welcomed by young families in Springs. I know when my kids were little, we're going back a long time, but I had to, you know, put them in the car and we had to drive to the village because we didn't have any place in Springs to bring the little ones. There was, you know, the Springs school has equipment, but that's really, it was geared for, for older kids. They did have a small playground for the younger ones, but you couldn't use it when school was in session, right? So I think that this, and I've seen families down there. So I think that this, and I've seen families down there. It's also contiguous to the picnic area and maybe we also moved some picnic tables over, you know, so that it's, so there's places families can come down and give kids snacks and have them, you know, playing there.
Yeah, and I think it goes within the, like, it's probably almost a 10-year effort of the town to upgrade the park there. We've done it with the pavilion.
Yeah.
We upgraded the septic systems of both the conference stations, David King Field, that's been resurfaced, fortunately, multiple times. And we've also put exclusionary split rail fencing when individuals have been driving cars on there. So this is one of those levels the town is committing to the park and to recreational values.
The only other thing I would add, because I know the litter committee would be angry with me if I didn't add it, is either removing some of the receptacles that are there that are kind of lined up before you go down, drive down to the park so that, you know, the litter is controlled in this area as well.
Okay. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing it.
Thank you all.
And I think it's great that you're, we're able to retain the equipment that's there. This also, there used to be monkey bars there and we had to take those down because they had gotten dangerous. And really, the only ones that were using it were runners to stretch before they, you know, went for a couple of loops around the park.
Yeah, and it wasn't obvious that we were going to do that. We had a specialist come in and look at it to, you know, to tell us what kind of condition it was in. And given the cost of these pieces of equipment and the space that we had to work with it, it made sense in the end.
Yeah, and we're, and we're going to need to see, maybe when we, we need to figure out, we're going to need more parking there. Because I mean, people are parking there now to do their, their loops to walk. And if we build something, this is going to be very inviting, like I said, for young families and there's going to be more of a demand there. And you've got that steep hill. If you're, if you, if you don't have parking up top, you're going down the hill and finding, you know, and then you're walking up a hill with all the ones, which is, you know, can be a challenge.
Great.
All right, beautiful. So again, I think this is something, I know you said you, you sent the presentation out to a number of folks in Springs and to the CAC. So, you know, ideally, this is something we want to move on because we'd love to get this
Yep.
In play for, for, for this, you know, spring, summer of next year. So we're asking folks to reach out to you if they have thoughts, questions.
100%. And one of the people I sent it was, was David Bouda, who I know does a very good job of getting information out there, so.
All right, so now we're up to our last topic today and we welcome Eric Schantz. We're going to have a discussion, post-hearing discussion on the Affordable Multiple Residents legislation that we heard, I guess it was two weeks ago?
Yeah, I think so.
10 days ago?
It had to be.
Welcome, Eric.
Hello, everyone. Yes, it was September 18th was the date of the public hearing. So you received, well, there was one speaker at the hearing, you received one written comment. I think the order of events for the day is to discuss the public comments, see if they've been adequately addressed, also see if there are any changes to the proposed legislation that need to be made as a result of the public comments or any other concerns that the board may have, depending upon whether or not there are changes that need to be made. Depending upon what they are, you may need to rehear the matter. If that's the case, we'll, we'll address that. If not, then the planning department would bring an EAF Parts II and III to the town board for a secret declaration. We'd also send off the planning commission referral. So those would be the next steps if there are no changes needed. I guess I have some comments here. Just in summary, the public comments were really sort of in three categories. One was concern that the use will not maximize units on a property. The second was concern that creating such a use will not be financially feasible. And the third is concern that the ownership, ownership structure is too limited by not permitting condos or fractionalized ownership. We note that the use is intended to be limited in scale with single centralized ownership, creating multiple residents that fit into existing residential neighborhoods. The use is not intended to promote the creation of new affordable housing developments. That in quotes, as a specific use or other large-scale development. And as such, the maximum number of housing units that would otherwise be permitted without sewage treatment by the health department may be greater in some instances than what this code would otherwise permit. However, it's important to not only promote additional affordable housing opportunities, but also create a use with standards and requirements that will not result in an adverse impact upon the character of a neighborhood. Concerns over financial feasibility were expressed. It was stated that between the cost of land and construction, the return from rental revenue will not result in a financially feasible project. The planning department agrees that the cost of land is prohibitive in this sense. However, the use is not envisioned to create opportunities for private land developers. It is anticipated that entities applying for this use will primarily be private property owners and/or public-private partnerships to create an affordable multiple residence. In the case of the former, the cost of purchasing land is moot as they would already own it. In the case of the latter, public funding reserved for the creation of affordable housing opportunities could be utilized. Finally, the prohibition on units being condominiums was cited, cited as possibly restrictive and discouraging to potential developers. Again, the town does not envision land developers to be the primary entities creating affordable multiple residences. In fact, it's interesting to note that one of the planning board's primary concerns when they reviewed this was that the uses would only be created by local employers as land developers. As such, the board has received contrasting comments that the use will not be feasible for developers and that it will only be feasible for developers. Most importantly, with regard to ownership, a key component of this use as drafted is that there is a single centralized ownership. This is important as affordable multiple residences would be situated within residential neighborhoods. If there is an ordinance enforcement or other issue related to the tenancy of the property, it is desired to have one property owner and manager as opposed to up to 12 to resolve the situation with. Again, this use is not intended to permit the creation of an affordable housing development or a resort or other condominium complex. It is intended to permit the creation of small-scale multiple residences with a simple ownership structure. However, with that public comment in mind, the board may wish to discuss further what the proposed code assets currently drafted would permit as far as who can own or live in a unit, as that is a key component of the law. So the board should discuss these public comments and determine if any changes need to be made to the draft legislation. As I said, depending upon where the board lands in that conversation, well, where the board lands in that conversation will, will determine the next steps. But we are yet to do an EAF for this or a planning commission referral. So board should have a discussion and determine if there's any changes to the legislation that needs to be made.
Do you want to take the lead here?
Yes, please. Thank you. And thank you, Eric. You know, I got to give Eric a lot of credit on this. He helped, you know, really was behind this from the time when he was housing director and now he's with the planning department, has been very, very helpful, very thoughtful about a use that I'm incredibly excited about, even though it's not going to solve all of our affordable housing problems in one fell swoop. I mean, just right off the bat, I want to acknowledge that, you know, profitability and affordability are at odds with each other. We should all get used to it. We're not going to come up with a plan that, that has affordable housing at great profits for developers that want to put affordable housing everywhere. This is going to, that, that's why we're in the situation that we're in because, you know, there are other uses of land here that are just more profitable. I don't think that we should or can let, let that scare us from doing anything at all. And I think that in some form, this is going to be a very good and important next step to allow for affordable housing developments on smaller parcels, because we just don't have that many large ones left. And as I've said numerous times, we need affordable housing of all different types. There's not going to be one, you know, one solution to the problem. As Eric noted, this is, you know, who's going to build this? It's questionable. If somebody is a developer trying to maximize profit, they're not going to buy a property and, and request an AHO and try to do this. And I understand, we actually only had one person publicly comment, which was surprising to me. I thought those comments were helpful. I thought there would have been more comments, although a lot of times the comments come from the negative and I think it can be thought of as encouraging that no one has objected to this. And I think that that shows the progress we've made as a town and the support we have as a community and the acknowledgement of this issue. One of the things that that commenter said, mentioned was being able to condo this out and Eric addressed this in his memo, and selling the units. I think that one thing that that misses is that part of being affordable, if you're selling it directly to somebody who's going to live there, it would cap the sale price, which I think would make that not possible. I'm going to put that at the side because I think that that's something else we could talk about later. But I think that this is thought of as, you know, one owner being the landlord renting these out to individuals, whether that's the town. This would open up an opportunity for the town, East Hampton Housing Authority, or just individuals who maybe are sacrificing the most money they could possibly make to help serve the community. And I do think there's people out there like that. And, and again, if we don't create the use and give the opportunity, we'll never know. In the worst-case scenario, nobody takes advantage of it. We certainly haven't done anything to harm ourselves. And I'm 100% positive that if this legislation goes forward, there will be affordable multiple residence units somewhere in town that's going to help address the problem in some way. One of the things that came up through conversations, in addition to crediting Eric, I want to credit Brittany Tolodano as well, town attorney, who's been very, very helpful with the legal part of this and drafting that code. It's not explicitly stated in this code that the owner can live in one of these units, although it's always been assumed that an owner could live there. I think we might want to explicitly say that. Again, this kind of comes out of those public comments of who's going to do this. You could almost think of this as sort of a super ADU type of situation where somebody who owns a parcel wants to live in a unit and then construct three rentals that they can make, you know, it goes back to almost the rental conversation we were having. But, you know, an owner of modest means could have three apartments on their property and you're already as of right allowed to live on your own property, so we wouldn't be giving anything that they don't have. They would just be choosing to add affordable units in addition to that. And so I think that's something we should strongly consider being even more explicit about and maybe I should have thought about that before, but it came out of those public comments and then further conversations with, with Brittany and Eric. And I'll, I'll stop in a second. The last thing I want to say, and this is not necessarily directly related to this, but the idea of, of having condos and selling these units off, I do think that we, that that's not a terrible concept, but I wouldn't want to have four individual landlords, you know, owning condos and then renting those, which would be the scenario in, in this case. I do think this opens up the door to the conversation of sort of middle income, that would be a higher income threshold and sales threshold than are currently affordability standards. And so maybe this is a concept that could expand to that, where somebody could sell units for something that an individual of modest means could afford. They don't quite meet the affordability standard, that sort of 130 to 180% AMI. We talked about this in the context of larger developments, which, you know, had some trepidation for sure, but I think this could be a model where that works. And so those public comments are fully, fully heard and, you know, I'm excited to watch this move forward.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Of course.
So if you, to explicitly say that the owner can live there, that would require rehearing?
It's not clear.
Or is it a small enough detail that it doesn't require rehearing? I don't know if that was looked at.
It seems at first blush, it would be a material change.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's not, it's not clear and it pains me to, to do that, but I do want to do this properly. It's been in the works for a while. In my minds, and again, you know, hindsight is, is I guess more perfect than foresight. I should have thought about that because, but in, in the context of public comments of who's going to do this, it became clear that, oh, maybe somebody who already lives on the property would want to do this. And so I would want to make that explicitly part of it. And Brittany thought it would need to be reheared as well and, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll jump in. I'm very open to that concept. I'm surprised to be a material change because theoretically, I mean, what's to stop the landlord renting the unit themselves at zero rent? So would it, would it be that big of a change in that sense? So I would be supportive of that. If it does require public hearing, so be it. No, look, I'm overall fully in favor of this. The only thing would be, you know, my initial piece when we just brought this up, I would love to see this on smaller lots than we're currently proposing with the code change, but I think that vote has sailed. But yeah, I'm supportive of this moving forward.
I don't have much to add. Ian, if that's what we have on to do for the public hearing, let's move forward to it again.
And I'm fully supportive of it and I recognize the comments that were, were made by, by members of the public. However, I think the answer and the memo, both, both the answer you just gave and the memo that Eric wrote really answers why this is important to, to also add to the, you know, to, to the toolbox for affordable housing. It does surprise me that it would need another public hearing too, because, I mean, a person owns land, they have the right to live on it. So, but anything that is the proper way to move forward, I'm also in favor of. And I really don't have anything else to add. I think this is time to move this forward.
Yeah, I agree. So Jake, if you could just have, look, just take a look at it one more time, see if this requires a rehearing and I'm ready to move forward as well.
And also another component of that is with the town attorney's office in the lead, we'll draft language to, for the code.
Right. Okay, beautiful. Thanks for joining us today, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, we're up to liaison reports.
Thank you. I will kick off with the Amagansett Systems Advisory Report. We're meeting October 20th this month due to Columbus Indigenous Day falling next Monday, same place, Amagansett School Library. IT Department, cybersecurity, obviously a topic of moment. Just to kind of inform the board members, 85% of town users have completed the cybersecurity training to date. We've put out 4,750 fishing simulations. Good news is only 7% of users actually clicked those, so the training is effectively working there for fishing internally. Open Gov update for September, we processed 519 records, generated $320,000 in revenue, 786 permits issued, 42 inspections done by department. The building department had 296 records created, $250,000 in revenue, 733 permits issued, three inspections done. Planning, 78 records created, 40,000 revenue, two inspections done. Fire marshal, 45 records, 14,000 revenue, 51 permits and 37 inspections. Human Services, second Tuesday of the month today, it's past now, but just to remind people, on the second Tuesday of the month, we have free blood pressure screenings at the senior center conducted by Blanca from the East Hampton Healthcare Foundation. This takes place from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM on the second Tuesday of the month. Highly recommend you getting your blood pressure checked. CD Nutrition Program, unduplicated congregant meal count for the week of September, 22nd to the 26th was 99. The Grab and Go unduplicated count for the week of September 22nd to 26th was 86. Reminder that Wellness 60+ is back at Ashwag Hall on Wednesdays with Qi Gong at 1:00 PM and osteoporosis prevention at 2:00 PM. The Friday Chair Yoga Class at 1:00 PM with Lois has been canceled for this week. And just a reminder that the senior center will be closed next Monday for Columbus Indigenous Day. Trustees, had a wonderful event on Sunday, the clam contest. Congratulations to Susan Serslow and thank you to the trustees and their partners and spouses for putting on an exceptional event. It was, it was really, really enjoyable. Sanitation Department, just some feedback from some of the workers at the Montauk Center. Just concerned with regards to ticks in the surrounding area where they have to kind of step into. Just want to work with getting the mowing done to a lower level there. There is a town policy regarding tick prevention with regards to PPE and just want to make sure all our workers there have the adequate protection in place. ADU Committee, the planning board met and reviewed the ADDU proposed code changes on the 24th of September. Fully supportive of the pro code, proposed code changes, so I'd like to move that forward to a public hearing as we can.
Did we get their memo?
It's, Eric sent it out this morning.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Digitization. So as, as I've mentioned before, we're kind of just verifying ownership of different data points in the town's database systems. To date, I've had feedback from the assessors office, the fire marshal office, when to get feedback from building, planning and natural resources on that, so I'll be following up. Brooks Park, Ian and myself met last week with the chair of the Brooks Park group, just discussing some of the challenges of moving that project forward and some of the frustrations of other CPF properties receiving funding as opposed to Brooks Park. You know, we went through some of the operational challenges that we have looked at with regards to that project. That group is looking to raise funds for the project internally to take burden off town finances, but key to that, they've identified is a license agreement. We'd previously got fairly close to one with the prior committee, but I would like to bring forward that proposed license agreement to the town board, potentially a work session for them to review what it is they would like to do to move that forward. Marine Museum Restoration, we're currently getting quotes to address the issues we have in the basement there and I'm looking to set up a meeting with David, myself, James Pinkott and Steve O'Brien, just to review how we're going to move that forward as part of the larger project there as well. Fort Hill Cemetery, just want to put it on people's radar that I would like to include the cemetery wall extension in the 2026 capital plan. We're, we're working forward with those proposals. LKMA is going to bring that forward to us in this month. East End Fire Commissioners, we had our meeting in Bridgehampton this month. Raised by the commissioners were some of the insurance challenges that firehouses are facing, getting renewals. Insurance is being canceled and this is basically due to guidelines they want firehouses to operate on with regards to response for emergencies. It's, it's of concern, you know, to, to the commissioners how that rolls out because it's effectively insurance companies dictating what the rollout of an emergency operation will be. So it's something that we may wish to kind of contact Albany with regards to because I'm not sure if that's the correct procedure for insurance companies to be dictating how that operates. They also brought up housing. Ian, I don't know if they reached out to you this, but Commissioner Beckett, we discussed possibility of first responder housing with land being gifted to firehouses to build it. I think they seem to think that concept was a bit more simple than potentially it is, but I just wanted to kind of put you in touch with Commissioner Beckett if they do wish to move forward with anything like that. Disabilities Advisory Board, so one thing that we are looking to do to increase membership of Disability Advisory Group and just communication is whether we can reach out to holders of disability permits at the town level. I did check with the town attorney, there's, there's no HIPAA violation to do that. check with the town attorney, there's no HIPAA violation to do that. So I would like to do a mailing for that group out to disability permit holders, just to make them aware of some of the resources available to them from a town perspective and some of the updates we have in coming on. We discussed the playground piece, obviously with regard to fencing. The next meeting for that group is October 17. East Hampton Youth Task Force, we have a meeting also on October 17, Friday at 2:00 PM. The primary discussion is going to roll around the cell phone policy that's been adopted by schools. Anti-Bass Task Force, we will be meeting Wednesday, 12th of November at 4:00 PM. In attendance will be PD and Ola, and we will be reviewing the police reform and intervention progress per the 2021 recommendations. Wildlife Management Committee, we had a very extensive meeting last week. On the agenda, we discussed the exposure up in Northwest Woods and how beneficial that's been to the biodiversity in that specific area. We also discussed the update from the DEC regarding the spotted lanternfly, just for my colleagues on that one and the public in general. Actually relatively good news, they think the impact of that may have well peaked at this point, especially as predators have learned to take their spotted lanternfly on as prey. So that's good news there. We also discussed deer vehicle collisions. Per PD, in the last 12 months, we got the deer vehicle collisions by road segment. The number of accidents showing animals and accidents is a primary contributing factor and what percentage of overall accidents that was within the township. Deer are by far the largest majority of animal actions. Just last few years' data, 2023, there were 134 accidents, of which 16, sorry, 17% were related to animal incidents. 2024, 151, of which 80, or sorry, 19% were animal related. And 2025, to date, 78, of which 11% are animal related. I just also want to do an outreach to drivers that we are coming into rutting season in this month and early November. There's a significant uptick in deer MVAs in that period. So just please be aware as you are driving dawn and dusk, specifically where visibility drops off. We also had a discussion following Scott Campbell's presentation to the Tick Advisory Committee with regards to deer population. And internally within the wildlife group, we discussed the impact of biodiversity, referencing the exposure. We also discussed deer as a kind of the primary tick host that could be addressed in terms of impacting tick-borne diseases. We looked at the carrying capacity concepts with regards to what the relevant deer population is with regards to biodiversity in the town. And we began to discuss what population management policies we could potentially introduce as a town, be it hunting, sterilization. It's obviously a source of, you know, very emotive to some groups, but it's definitely something I think we do need to look to address as a town board. I'll jump forward to kind of say the Tick Advisory Committee is fully supportive of this too, whether it be four posters or hiring in professional marksmen, but something to impact deer population to reduce tick-borne diseases out here. And while I'm on that tick-borne disease, you know, one thing that I want to update the public and my board members on is that there was a recent change with regards to how tick-borne diseases, the count is measured across New York State. And what's come to light is the incidence of tick-borne diseases is far higher than we previously recognized, both in terms of people out here being impacted, but also with regards to reporting. There's a lot of people who come here and will get bitten by a tick, but report it in Manhattan. So it's actually not reported as data out here. But just in terms of the impact ticks are having on public health here, there's significant concern from the medical community, and they would like to see action from the town in some form to address that.
So do you anticipate, are they going to be making a presentation in several weeks?
Yeah, I think we're going to look to do a presentation either in November or early December with regards to management plans. Other pieces.
Can I run another thing? So if they're going to be coming back with a recommendation for 2026, we need to put some money in the budget for it.
Right.
Right? So that's something we need to get to Becky.
Yep.
And discuss next Tuesday.
Yeah, I have a meeting with Andy Gates, just to follow up on what proposed actions might be there. Other information from the DEC, there is unfortunately a new invasive species, which is having a significant impact on the environment out here. It's called laurel wilt. It's a fungal disease spread by beetle again. This is impacting our sassafras and spice bush species. If people do come across this on their property, the advice from the DEC is to mulch in place and report to the DEC Forest Health Group. Business Committee, next meeting is October 15 at 2:00 PM. Emergence Preparedness, we passed a resolution last week. We've hired a new part-time assistant emergency preparedness coordinator on a 90-day contract. That's Aubrey Izzo. She will be reviewing hazards identified in the Suffolk County Hazard Mitigation Plan and addressing town protocols relating to some of those key hazards. Additionally, on wildfire preparedness update, we are moving forward with regards to clearing some of our fire roads in the Buck Hill area, the Edwards Hole area, the Grace Estates, and we will update the public accordingly on that. Tick control, just one other follow-up there. Gerald Simmons is looking to do a community lime outreach lecture, possibly in the fall, at Scoville Hall in Amagansett. I will confirm the date with the public in the next week or two as that location becomes confirmed. And then lastly, YMCA, I've had a lot of outreach from the public for an update on the pickable courts. The town submitted the application to the village for the pickable courts. That application was denied. The town engineer is working with the applicable village boards to get those necessary approvals. So that will hopefully be forthcoming. That's everything.
Great. Thanks, Tom. David?
Nature Preserve Committee is canceled for this month. The Montauk CAC met last night, and I have a better recap of that tomorrow, sorry, next week. Highway Department, we will be milling and paving roads, part of the fall milling and paving. So please be aware of that upcoming. In Montauk, the loans to pipe, there will be a fixing of the sleeving of the pipe at the terminal end of the C word end. So that might be some intrusion or some delays in some public access starting tomorrow there. And then lastly, I'm working with the Chamber of Commerce and also Sam Klein, looking at a potential New York Forward grant for downtown Montauk. More information in the future.
Beautiful. Thanks, David. Kate?
Yes, I had another meeting about St. Matthew's Chapel and the importance of it as a free town, and a discussion on designating it as a historic structure on private property at the Farm Museum. And there'll be another meeting of this group with Assistant Town Attorney and the Director of Planning next week. And I'll advise everybody on the board and the public of how that will move forward. I attended the Rewild Summer Intern graduation. 31 high school students participated this year. It was by far the largest number. The amount of wild and native plant species that they know as they went around the circle was pretty outstanding. They really had a good time connecting with with nature and being out. And you could really see the impact it has on both developing community of those young people and their love of the outdoors and nature. And I want to thank them and the leaders of that program for the good work that they did. And we saw them working on the town property, on the pollinator garden and the grass on meadows. They also worked at St. Matthew's Pollinator Garden at the Farm Museum and also on Long Lane. And they really did tremendous work, hard labor for the summer. And I want to just shout out another thank you to them. The compost report, as I mentioned before, where over 13,000 pounds in three years of food waste has now been eliminated from our waste stream. That saves taxpayers money and also creates that cycle of that renewable cycle of buying food, eating food, and returning it back to the ground here to be used again. So I wanted to, it's a phenomenal number with a real small amount of people working on it. There'll be more information on backyard composting coming in the future. The Wayne Scott CAC met, they had a meet the candidates forum during their last meeting, which took up most of the meeting. But of course, their concerns always are for gun club and airport. The New York State Grant Team, we met, we had an internal town staff team meeting with our state contract managers. It was very helpful to us to outline our tasks and to get more definitions on how we will complete this grant. It's a two-year grant, so we're going to get moving on that quickly. More presentations coming to the town board. There'll be a resolution on today to accept surveying for the ditch dune reconstruction. These are the final surveys that are needed to complete the easements. And that resolution is on for today. Litter Action Committee held the National Cleanup Day on September 20, and organizations from across the town participated. And I want to thank all those organizations and the Litter Action Committee for bringing a constant impact to our town, both to our wildlife, to the cost of town residents for picking it up and asking people to please not throw their litter out their windows. And also, I will be hosting a forum with many of the nonprofits in the community that promote sustainable landscaping, native planting, to help the town create a more user-friendly website, webpages for plant species and practices for sustainable landscaping. That will be held sometime in November, and most of the groups that work out here and landscapers are participating in that. And that's all I have for right now. Thanks, Kate. Ian?
Yes, last Saturday, there was a wonderful event in Springs, Springs Fest. It was the second, the second annual. And it was just, it was just lovely. I mean, a lot of you listening were probably there because there were a lot of people there. And I just want to thank the heart of Springs for putting that on, Wendy Hall and Aaron Field especially. And I know there were a lot of others. But it was just a great event. And it wasn't, you know, what people think about of the Hamptons. It felt like home and community and just a reminder of what a lovely place we live in and what a great community we have. The band Real East End Brass, made up of local school teachers, was absolutely fantastic. Saw a lot of my colleagues, neighbors. I'm a Springs resident, so I'm passionate about this. I also just want to acknowledge that, you know, the Parsons Blacksmith Shop reciting that's been in the works for some time happened to start shortly before this event. And everybody really took that in stride. I want to thank Ronald Webb Builders for helping to accommodate us moving some of their things around. Matt Jedlica, who helped, and Steve O'Brien, of course, who did so much of the setup there. And the organizers for not panicking and understanding that it was going on. And in the end, I think it worked out great. And I encourage everybody to go next year when that happens. I also want to acknowledge something else that's related. I think that that's a lovely place to gather, and you don't even realize what a nice yard there is back there. And there's a lot of good events from the farmer's market and other things that happen in the heart of Springs. There was parking on School Street, you could access, you know, across that bridge. And of course, school's not in session when most of those events are happening. So that's a, I think, a really interesting way for us to safely accommodate cars and pedestrian traffic to attend those events. I would like to look into, I've spoken with the Natural Resources Department about trimming the Frag Mighty to make that walk more appealing and inviting. And I'd like to look into that more, what we can do to remove that Frag Mighty. It's expensive and difficult, but I think there are things we can do. And I also have started to look at the idea of installing a parking lot, a seasonal parking lot, as low-key as we can behind Springs Library, where there's a little bit of a clearing area. This idea has been out there for some time. I'm looking into it further because, again, I think that that's a lovely place to be. And we just want to make sure that we can safely accommodate cars and pedestrians. Also, just want to acknowledge, the Parsons Blacksmith Shop was open. Ken Cullen was there working it, you know, the Coal Forge, which was really great to see. And I want to acknowledge Springs Historical Society, how much cleanup they've done there in the last two years that I've been here. It was a really, it's a beautiful building, super, super cool. And I just want to give them their credit, you know. And when I first got on the board, there was sort of one part of it open and a lot of other stuff. And now you can walk around the whole shop and really appreciate it. And looking forward for that siding to be done. It was already touched on, the largest clam contest, I think, was a very similar feel, just to, you know, really, for me, felt like why I love this place. And I want to thank the trustees and everybody who helped to make that happen. Back to sort of more government-type stuff, Ag Advisory will meet on Thursday, this Thursday at 5:00 PM at 300 Panago Place in Suite 111A. As always, that's open to the public, so I encourage anybody interested to attend. Tom mentioned Brooks Park. We had a brief meeting. Just to, I've already passed on some of our conversation to the planning department to look into access. You know, Brooks Park structures are set quite a bit off the road. And my concern before we restore those buildings is that we have, that we make sure that we can have safe, code-compliant access that also preserves the idealistic, the idyllic nature that drew Brooks and Park to that site to begin with. And then that's the balance. Actually, Eric has given me some preliminary comments on that, but look forward to talking about that more. Also, to address some of Tom's report, in terms of affordable housing, first responders, wholeheartedly agree. I've been trying to work on something mirroring what Suffolk County did, but making sure we do our, we do a research and that it meets fair housing standards. And as he implied, it's trickier than we think. I will say that, Chris is a friend of mine, a great chief, would love to talk to him more about this. Amagansett Fire Department actually is a unique or fire district in that they actually have one of the very few properties that is large enough and zoned with the affordable housing overlay. So I think there's some real opportunities, and I'm excited to hear that conversation. I also have a call with somebody from Southampton tomorrow, who's working on their own way of addressing this need. I think we all agree that first responders, firemen, firewomen are incredibly important. Anything we can do to help house them. When we talk about housing in our community, you know, they're right at the center of all of that, but we just have to make sure that we do it in a legal, fair way, and also one that's going to uphold challenges, because these type of legislation are getting challenged all over the place. And so I've been working with Brittany on this and hope to have more to report soon.
Thanks, Ian. So this weekend, Suffolk County legislator Ann Walker and I welcomed veterans and their families to the Suffolk County Veterans Resource Fair at the American Legion Post 419 in Amagansett. More than 20 organizations came together to connect veterans with information on healthcare, housing, employment, mental health, and other essential services. During the Q and A, a question came up, talking about giving priority to different user groups. A question came up about giving priority to veterans and wanted us to look into if that's something that could be done as well.
They're protected class, I believe, aren't they?
Yeah. So that was, that was brought up. And so we were just grateful that so many folks came out, you know, made the trip out from Hop Hug and Yampang to be there. And we also had a table, Human Services, Diane Patrizio and Liliana Rodriguez had a table. And so if folks that didn't get a chance to go, veterans or their families, and they're looking for assistance in how to connect with these different organizations, just reach out to the Human Services Department, and they can connect to the services that are available.
Kathy, so just while you're on veterans, just one other project we've, I've got going concurrently is the project called Hometown Heroes. You might have seen other towns where they have flags recognizing veterans. I have a meeting set up with the organizer of that and the VFW, just to kind of ascertain what the cost might be, what it might look like. Something I'll bring forward to the rest of the board in the near future.
Yeah, I think that was, I mean, maybe it was a different organization, but this sounds like something that was also done during COVID. So the town applied for a safety training grant from PERMA, and we were awarded $3,500. This is going to offset the cost of chainsaw training that we will be conducting for personnel in our highway and buildings and grounds departments. East Hampton Sec Harbor CAC met last night. I'll have a recap on that next week. And lastly, our fall quarterly newsletter is going to be dropped at the post office today. And so it'll be in mailboxes later this week. This is the preview of the front cover here. There's a couple of dates, save the dates, that we want to let folks know about. We're going to be doing two Drug Takeback Days, Saturday, October 25, and Saturday, November 1, from 10 to 2. And then we're going to be bringing back the Free Community Shredding Event. That was such a success last year. And that will be on November 1, from 10 to 2. So that's all I've got for my liaison report. And now we can move on to resolutions.
My pleasure. I'll for Resolution 2025 1333 is a budget modification of Recreation Department, bringing $2,500 from other expenses and increasing motor vehicle repairs in the same amount.
Second, all in favor.
Aye, aye. 1334 is a budget modification, Buildings and Grounds for modification for Buildings Utilities Costs, where we're bringing $150,000 from interest and investments and increasing the expenditure line for light and power in the same amount.
Second, all in favor.
Aye. I'd like to make a motion for 1335 to table.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye. I can make a motion for 1336 to table.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
I have Resolution 1337?
Next week's fun.
I have Resolution 1337, release security at 12 Garbus Lane, 280 dash A for improvements. And this security, the applicant is Jose Leon at 12 Garbus Lane, East Hampton, New York. And the release of security will be in the amount of $5,000.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Resolution 1338 is to accept a road widening easement in Urban Renewal Parcel 17 in SP dash 2 dash 1. This, the grantor is Third Street Invesco Company LLC. This is at 8 Third Street Springs. And the date is October 3, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
1339 is to accept a road widening easement for Urban Renewal Parcel 79D in SP-2-2. The grantor is 24-15 Street LLC. It's at 24-15 Street Springs, and it's dated September 25th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 1340 is to accept proposal for additional survey work for Wall Bridge surveyors pursuant to Resolution 2025-135. The town of East Hampton accepted a proposal from Wall Bridge surveyors to survey and obtain topography with two-foot contours for roughly 2,600 linear feet of beachfront along Ditch Plains Beach, including all property lines, and including the creation of easements over a portion of the beachfront parcels for a cost not to exceed $8,640.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I have Resolution 2025-1341. It's to amend Resolution 2024-1526. This is the Department Head Merit Program, and this is to add the following eligible title, effective immediately, Town Planning Director. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
1342 is to amend Resolution 2025-1320. This was a resolution we did Thursday night, but it had the incorrect not to exceed number. It should be $175,000. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Back to you, Tom.
2025-1343 is a budget modification for Sanitation Department. We're going to increase revenue budget line for solid waste permits, solid waste fees, and insurance recoveries in the amounts of $45,000, $300,000, and $7,500 respectively, and increase expenditure budget line for subcontractor costs in the amount of $352,500.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Resolution 1344, this is to amend Resolution 2025-1308, just to correct the fund line. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Resolution 1345, this is to adopt the Section 8, 2026 Administrative Plan. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2025-1346 is to establish a lead bank share time for an East Hampton Town Police Department, police officer effective retroactive to October 5th. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So that's all we have on the agenda. So do I have a motion to go into exec session?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session for CPF, personnel, public safety, potential litigation, litigation, contracts, and real estate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us, and thank you, Jody, at LTV.
Thank you, Tom Ward, and you are off.